Full voting member of the board. Scott Zalinski is a full voting member of the board as well. Mary Berry is an associate member and James Morse is an associate member. Also with us tonight is Norine Stockman, who is the zoning administrator. Ashley DeMello, who is the recording secretary for tonight. And as always, we like to acknowledge Justin Shanahan from the Falmouth IT Department, who's helping us out with the technical aspects of tonight and our friends at FC TV, who are helping us broadcast live across town and online. The Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals is charged with applying the zoning bylaws for the town, and we consider requests for special permits, variances, and appeals, as provided in the bylaws which have been approved by town meeting and the Attorney General's Office for the Commonwealth. All decisions the board makes are made through the public hearing process. The board's goal is to hear testimony from the applicant and from the public, and also to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement of the hearing and then present any pertinent information from the file, such as referrals from town departments and summarizing correspondences to the board. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, and time may be extended by vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant, and the public will be invited to comment as well. We do say that public comment should be directed only at the project itself. We ask you to please refrain from making any personal or derogatory statements. Public comment can include an opinion in favor or in opposition, or it might just simply be a question about the nature of the project. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time in the event that comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak will be recognized by the chair through the Zoom virtual meeting software. And again, for those login instructions, they are at www.falmouthma.gov/zba. There's the link there. It starts up the Zoom webinar software. And during the appropriate time of each hearing, I will open it up to public comment. I will ask you to click the raised hand icon using the Zoom app. And once we get you elevated with your video and microphone working, we'll ask you your name, your address, and any question, comment, or concern that you may have. And we typically limit public comment to two minutes per person. From there, we will either close or continue the hearing when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented by testimony and in the file to make a decision by motion and vote of the board, the hearing will be closed. And the alternative, we may continue the hearing to a future date and time. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. And as for board discussion and decision, the board may then further discuss the project among ourselves, and we would make a motion to deny or approve would be made and voted upon. The motion will include a summary of key findings and conditions. An affirmative vote of four members, which is a super majority, is required for approvals of motions on special permits, variances, and appeals. A split vote, such as a three to two vote, would be a failure to carry and would result in denial of the project. Under Massachusetts general law, if a special permit is denied, the applicant cannot return to the board for two years unless the project is substantially different. So, reading the normal COVID language, I didn't mention that there was an update, and since it's nice and early in the meeting and we have a lot of people attending. As we all know, the governor will be suspending the emergency orders regarding COVID. And we will be back live in person in the selectmen's select board's room. Have they actually changed the name of it? What the name change of the board? I'm not sure. But we will be back at the selectmen's meeting room live in person, June 17. So again, June 17, we will all be live in person. All right. And I'll be making that announcement throughout the evening with any continuances and board updates wherever the night takes us. All right. So turning to our agenda for the night, we do have public comment, followed by two continuations and four new public hearings. Up first for the night is public comment. This public comment portion of the night is meant for anything not on the agenda. If anyone has something to say that is not on the agenda, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. We will elevate you in a moment. If you do want to provide comment on a hearing tonight, stay put, and we will address it when the time comes. All right, not seeing anything for public comment at the moment, so we will go right into our continuations.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I just might for a moment, I know it's usually the public comment section. But I would like to ask for a moment of silence for the passing of Virginia Valieyla. Virginia put many years of service into this town on various boards. She was on the select board. She was on water quality, many working groups. And I think the town is much better for all the years of service that she put in. So if we could just have a brief moment of silence in honor of her and, you know, prayers and wishes go out to her family.
That is a fine tribute to her, Bob. Thank you for those words. And we will observe a moment of silence in honor of Virginia. Okay, thank you, Bob. All right, moving on with our continuations, we do have application 61-20 Echo Land Development LLC, Zero Percival Road, Lot Four, and T Ticket. A request for a comprehensive permit to construct 16 single-family dwellings. Four dwellings will be affordable. And I believe we have the applicant himself along with his engineering team. There's a lot of people in the attendees list, so if you could just hit the raised hand icon. There's Mr. Montero. If Mr. Montero and Mr. Colley could be elevated, please. And, Arine, do we have our peer engineer? I'm just not sure. There's a lot of names out there.
I'm not currently seeing our peer engineer, but we have emailed recently, and the peer engineer did convey that there was information that they were looking for that they had not yet received and that had been copied to the applicant as well.
Oh, understood. Okay. Thank you, Arine. All right. So, Mr. Montero and Mr. Colley, you've both been elevated. So all you need to do is turn on your microphones and turn on your video.
And, Mr. Chairman, there was a letter submitted to the file, so when you're ready, I can read in the...
Sure, go ahead and do that, Bob.
So this letter is dated May 19, and it's from Troy Wallace Associates. And it's regarding Zero Percival Road, Echo Land Development LLC, application for comprehensive permit. Dear Chairman Hury, on behalf of my clients, Daniel Coulteri, owner of 187 Percival Road, Patricia A. Harris, owner of 181 Percival Road, and William and Margaret Overholtz, owner of 193 Percival Road, here and after a butters, I respectfully submit the following comments regarding the supplemental information submitted by the applicants. One, the revised plan shows the road relocated onto the applicant's land in response to the abutters assertion that the applicant did not have rights to locate the road as shown on the initial plans. However, the new road layout has raised new concerns, particularly where it meets with Percival Road and intersects with Trotting Park Road. This new design presents safety concerns, including traffic conflicts with vehicles merging from Percival Road and the new road when traveling towards Trotting Park Road and conflicts and confusion for vehicles entering from Trotting Park Road. The abutters request that when the Board of Appeals refers the applicant's plan for peer review, in addition to general engineering review, the board also requests that the road design be reviewed by a traffic engineer. Such review will provide board with professional opinion regarding whether the design is appropriate and meets safety standards. Two, the abutters note for the board's attention that the applicant has still not submitted a request for waivers. The application is incomplete until the applicant lists each waiver that is needed for the project to proceed, until the applicant includes mitigation measures to reduce the impacts of each waiver. The board cannot begin its substantive review of the application until the applicant identifies each waiver that is necessary for the proposed project. And three, the abutters continue to have the concerns they expressed in our letter of December 8, 2020, with the exception of the proposed road no longer being on their property. Thank you for your consideration, respectfully submitted Brian J. Wall, and he did do a carbon copy to all three of his clients. I'd also like to make note that we did receive the letter from Environmental Consulting and Restoration, which was forwarded from Mr. Montero to our office. And where the plans have been adjusted, we have the new plans, and I know the board does. But just for open meeting law purposes, they're going to be discussing these plans this evening. Somebody on their team should be sharing the screen so that the people in the audience can see what we're discussing.
All right, thank you, Bob. Mr. Montero, I understand that your representative, Mr. McKenzie, is dealing with COVID exposure. So he's not with us tonight, but best of good health to him. And you will be continuing tonight with your engineering team addressing some technical concerns that we have, right?
That is correct.
All right, fantastic. So go right ahead with your presentation tonight.
I have my engineer, Jack Colley. He'll be going through the subdivision if the board has any questions on our layout. Feel free to ask us questions.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is Jack Colley. I have shared the screen. Do you recognize the sharing of screen?
Yep, we can see it just fine.
Okay, great. I'm not sure where to begin because I did not attend the prior meetings. Let me start by saying the first set of plans you received were conceptual in nature. Mr. Montero and I, when we undertook this project, established a starting point by saying we're going to submit preliminary plans to the board to get a sense of where the board wanted us to go in the development of this property. Since then, we've done an extensive amount of work. We have started by taking a portion of the northerly properties and dedicated them in a buffer zone or buffer area. That buffer area is 54 feet wide. It consists of a 20-foot separation from the northerly property line, a 24-foot footprint of a proposed road, a four-foot sidewalk, and then the remaining balance of land. That is shown on the first sheet. It's a bit hard to read because of the scale. If you are, let's see, can I get to the second sheet now? Oh, boy. Screen does not want to scroll. I don't know why. Is the committee or is the board seeing the same problem that it won't scroll to page two?
Jack, you're on the first page, which is the one that doesn't have all of the drainage, doesn't have the topals. That's the one so they can just see the layout.
I'm sorry, I had to scroll down, not to the left or right. The second page shows the contours of the property, shows a proposed house on each lot, shows a septic system in the front yard, reserve area in the back. The houses are depicted, so they comply to current zoning in the town of Falmouth, the residential structures, that is 25-foot frontage, 10-foot sideline or rear as the minimum distances. Depending on the lot you're on, some of them are two-bedroom designs, some are three-bedroom design.
No, they're all three-bedroom.
I apologize. They're all three-bedroom. On the bottom of the page, we show a typical profile, starting at Trotting Park Road, and then proceeding in a southwesterly direction. The road is about 1,300 feet long, and it terminates at a drainage basement. Prior to that, there is a driveway that we've reconfigured to permit a fire truck or a rescue vehicle to come into the subdivision, go down the road, and turn around in, I think it's lots 14 and 15. I have the cursor on it. That's to permit the turning of emergency vehicles. If you go to the next page, which is at 20 scale, you can see the same plan as the second sheet on the third, fourth, and fifth sheet, which shows the houses, the septic system, the setback distances, the general shape and form of the houses, and also the road, the lighting that's proposed, the hydrants that are proposed, the contours, the proposed drainage swale at in front of Lot Five. If you were to go to the northwest, you would also see, and let me see if I can slide it over there. You can all see a solid catch basin, which then goes to a leaching pit to collect the surface waters that come down the road. We have a negative slope from Trotting Park Road to that solid basin, so we will not be inundating or flooding the public way, and that will contain the surface waters. We have a high point at Station 1 plus 27, which means the water flows from that point to the west or from that point to the southeast. We then go down the road, and at Station 4 plus 50, more or less, we have a drainage swale. Again, what we're doing is we're picking up the surface waters. In this particular case, we have a settling basin for the low-intensity storms. And when the higher or more intense storms occur, that swale will fill up, and then it will overflow into two leaching catch basins to pick up the larger storm events. The purpose being is that on the low-intensity storms, we don't have direct discharge into the groundwater, but they will go into vegetated swales where they can percolate at a slower rate into the groundwater. On the higher-intensity storms, once the capacity and swale is reached, it will then have a direct discharge into the leaching pits. A good rule of thumb is about 40% to 50% of the rainfall events will always be the low-intensity storms. So 50% of the time, you'll never see those leaching pits being utilized to contain surface water. The next sheet depicts the same thing. Driveways, houses, septic systems, reserve area. And the road, the swale that was at Station, that is at Station 4 plus 50. And then if you head southeast, you'll see that in Station 10, we have another swale with leaching catch basins. And then if you go to the next page, you'll see that the road where it terminates, there is the turnaround for the fire rescue department. And then we have another detention basin here, where we have a solid basin here. After the solid basin fills, it then goes into this detention area. We don't show a leaching pit because this detention area is large enough to contain both the smaller duration and the larger-duration storms. There are hydrants. They're hard to see on the plan, but there are hydrants along the side of the road that is serviced by the water that's proposed. And like before, we show the 20-foot buffer, the 24-foot traveled surface. It's actually 22 feet with a one-foot perm on each side, and then the four-foot sidewalk, and the remaining area is buffer. At 10 plus 50, you can see a standard light symbol, and 12, you can see a standard light symbol. So we have lighting on the roadways from Trotting Park Road down to the end. That's about it. If you have some specific questions about the engineering, I'd be happy to answer them.
Sounds good. And, Mr. Colley, would you mind taking down your share screen? Thank you for the presentation. It's just easier for me to manage the meeting, going to board questions. Thank you. And I suppose if anyone wants to put back up, we can just ask Mr. Colley for that. All right. And if I didn't already say it before, the voting members on this project are myself, Ken Foreman, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, and Scott Zalinski. So we will turn to board comment, and Bob, you're to the left of me. Why don't you start us off?
Yeah, so, Mr. Colley, regarding the turnaround for the emergency vehicles, is that turnaround set in private driveways for the house, for those two homes?
It's a good question. Actually, it is in the driveway area. The way to, what we had anticipated is that the occupants of that area would only be able to park directly in front of their house. The remaining area would have to be left vacated for the potential use of an emergency vehicle.
So how can you control something like that where the actual driveway is on the individual home lot?
Well, it's a condition of the sale. What they're going to have to do is come to an agreement. That is, Mr. Montero will have to have an agreement with those two occupants, saying that they cannot utilize certain parts of the driveway. I suppose it could be in the form of an easement. But it's no different than if you had a cul-de-sac at the end of a roadway. You can't control who's going to park in the cul-de-sac. Typically, what happens is, especially on a Memorial Day weekend, you might have family and friends at your house, and where do they park? Wherever they can. So they park in the turnaround of a cul-de-sac or a hammerhead. They park, or in this case, they could park in that person's driveway. Doesn't mean it's right.
No, so I guess my concern is, I've never seen a project, at least that I've been involved with, where we've set up something for an emergency vehicle access and turnaround that aren't set on the roadway itself or a cul-de-sac or a T. And it's easy to put, you know, something in for an easement. But, you know, when you're looking at a property that's finished and you go in and you see a full driveway, I think it's grave safety concern to expect that someone is going to comply with an easement on that driveway to make sure nothing else is placed there. I just think it's a dangerous situation. Have you located all the private wells that exist that would surround this property to make sure they're meeting the buffers on the septics and the reserves?
Yes, we did earlier on that. The houses that are across the street, the septic systems are well over 100 feet away. And the houses that are to the south of it, they're all on town water.
So the ones that are on town water, are any of those town water homes still using their wells? Where, I know a lot of the homes on Trotting Park Road still use their wells?
When I did the research down at the DPW Water Department, everybody else was listed that they were using town water. They were registered.
All right. So if you could update the engineering plan to show the locations of the wells so that they're identified and which properties have the wells, so we can see them on a plan?
I'd be happy to, but we may be denied access to the property. We can't assume they're going to allow us access to property to locate their well. There are certainly...
Yeah. If you can identify, if they don't, and you can identify the properties, we can at least check to make sure that, you know, those wells don't have any issues being too close. You know, it's very hard to, you know, if somebody says you can't access it, can't get to it. But the, you know, the Health Department, I mean, there's plenty of people that can get whatever the locations were, the companies when they put them in. It's always been an extreme issue when you're dealing with any properties with wells. So if mark the ones you know of and you found and you know the exact locations, if there's certain properties that you can't get access to, you can put notes on those properties that they've refused access, and we could always maybe send a note to the property saying that we're looking for access or looking to find the location so we can make sure that their wells are protected. I don't know if this is an engineering comment enough regarding Mr. Wall's letter. So when I drove the property, coming out on Trotting Park Road, it's almost a blind, when you come out on the road, you can't see the cars coming from the side. I've done it a couple of times now, and I've almost got T-boned twice. So I would like something that shows, you know, site radiuses. And I do think it would be helpful to the board, where they're doing this as a driveway that does a butch running park road, that we get some kind of expertise regarding traffic and flow, and also some feedback from the fire department on the current plan on the turnaround. That's the only questions I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And just as a quick follow-up regarding the wells, aren't wells, don't they require as-built? So shouldn't they be on record at the board health or the appropriate department?
They probably are if they did the as-built. But the other thing is on that plan, it's versatile because if there is a well, which we've already, which we don't think anyone's within 100 feet, we can always put the septic in the back where the other houses are all on town water. So we have the versatility of doing that also.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Montero. James, any questions? All right. Thank you, James. Ken.
Yeah, I have similar concerns about the turnaround, and I'd certainly want to get a, actually referrals from both the fire department and a traffic engineer that that's going to be acceptable, that's going to work. The letter submitted by the abutters, by Mr. Wall, says that we don't have a full waiver list. Is that still the case?
We do have about three waivers, but we will be adding several more in the next hearing.
Okay. I wondered, you located the sidewalk on the south side, which makes it very discontinuous. And, you know, you've got 1,300 feet, which is, you know, more than a quarter mile or just about a quarter mile there. I was wondering if it might make more sense to locate it on the north side of the road, which would both convey a little extra buffer to the abutters on that side, but also allow, you know, if you're a kid on a bike or something, so you can go the full length without having to cross driveways.
Well, it's interesting you should say that, Ken, because the fact of the matter is, we thought about putting it on the opposite side, and then I thought, well, that means you have to go out of your house and across the street to get to the sidewalk.
That's true.
So I thought, why not keep the sidewalk on the side where the houses are? It's kind of six of one, half a dozen of the other. We do have lighting on that side as well. So, I mean, we, you know, it's reasonable to assume that with the lighting and with the sidewalk on the same side as the house, that it's a safe environment for children or for people or adults if they ride their bikes. I'd like to digress also. After we read the letter from Mr. Wall, you know, we agreed that what we would do is perform some surveying to the north and south of Trotting, the Trotting Park Road entrance, to pick up the details of the mature trees and brush so we can better ascertain the site distance in that area.
You know how many total trips per day you expect at the corner there?
Somewhere between, I'm guessing there's going to be a minimum between 64 and 80 trips a day.
And that's based on?
The number of dwellings.
Yeah, but I mean, is there, do you have an ITE numbers for that or?
We can provide those to you.
Yeah. So that goes to the traffic engineer, uh, which I think is a good idea for that corner. And as I said, sign off. Which, which of the units, and you may have indicated this earlier, are affordable?
Uh, I believe I chose ten, eleven. I believe number three. I thought it might have been either twelve or thirteen. I submitted it to the board with, to the, to Noreen's office, which ones were going to be the affordable ones. So they're scattered throughout the neighborhood.
And how, you know how trash is going to be? Is everyone going to have a mailbox? Is trash going to be picked up?
I believe the trash will be private and as far as the mailboxes go, it could be one station every one where everybody comes to the, onto the property and gets their mail.
Where's that located?
It's not, that's to be determined.
Okay. Do you have space set aside somewhere for it? I guess not.
Basically, I mean, even last time when we spoke, you know, it was even with the, we're going to put a school bus stop. You know, with the air, whatever we could put it. I mean, there's a lot of land that we can put it almost on anywhere on the property. And I just think the most convenient one will be where everybody can either get the mail where they're not going over somebody's property. So it's, I'm very open to, they're going to be putting a common mailbox for the subdivision.
There is a twenty foot buffer between the edge of the road and the northeast of the sideline of Mr. Montero's property. So I'm sure we could find a location. Put a cubicle, whether it be for a bus stop or a mail station.
Okay. I guess for now, those are my questions.
All right. Thank you, Ken. Ed, any questions?
Yes. In addition to the concern about the fire department getting into parking spaces on fourteen and fifteen. Then the lot sixteen, it looks like when you pull in, you gotta back out, back around a corner and back down the street into somebody else's property and to turn around and head out of the area. It just does, so something should be done a little better than that.
All right. Anything else, Ed?
No, that's all.
Scott?
Mr. Chairman, you know how uncomfortable I am without any peer review participation. Mr. Colley had, had expressed the fact that the original plans were conceptual in nature. And now we're getting these with not a lot of specificity. And at the risk of sounding facetious, which I'm not trying to do, it's not this board's responsibility to build this project. It, it, so without, without peer review, why, can somebody tell me why peer review isn't here tonight?
Uh, so it may be that they were not clued in on the date today. As I mentioned, we did receive an email uh, within a day or two where they had said that they had not received this newest engineering. So I think they really didn't feel that they had much to offer as far as information to the board.
So am I wrong thinking without them here and us asking all these questions? He'll have, they'll have nothing to check into with respect to board questions at the next meeting?
Well, so we will give them a copy of the transcript from this meeting and they'll have access to the tape.
Okay. And we can direct them to do that before testimony? I mean?
Yes, and I will give them a list of things that we're looking for from them.
Okay. Then I guess I'll, I'll continue with Mr. Colley. Mr. Colley, what's the plan for snow removal?
You can't answer that. You'll have to ask Eddie that.
It'll be private.
Where does it go?
What do you mean? The snow?
Right. Are they going?
It's, it's like anything else. I mean, it depends on how many inches of snow that you have, but if they're going to be going in there, I'm sure it will be set aside on the sides of the road or whatever, and a lot of it will be taken off. I mean, it's any standard procedure that you do for a snow removal.
So will that be part of, of paperwork or covenant or any of that, that excess of any inches or whatever have to be contracted and removed by whatever off the property?
Correct. If it's, if it's, if you have a, a blizzard and, and it doesn't matter what town you're in or what street you're on, the snow has to be removed. It'll have to be taken off site somewhere.
And who will police that?
If, if there's going to be any type of association, it'll have to be the residents.
Okay. So there'll be, there'll be information on the costs and all of that in, in future meetings. So we'll be able to review that, right?
Uh, if you have private contractors, I mean, anybody can write up a contract for snow removal. Usually the way they do their contracts is they charge by the number of inches that are, that are falling on the, on the, on the ground.
I, I understand that, but this is a special permit and special circumstances that all of this has to be recorded prior to an approval. All right. Mr. Colley, you show through testimony that this above surface, this isn't subsurface drainage on this road, correct?
There is a subsurface drainage. Well, it's at the entrance. It goes from solid manhole to a leaching basin.
That's up on the corner towards Trotting Park, right?
That's on lot one. Directly across from four and five, there's a swale. That swale will collect small storm events and allow the infiltration into the ground. Larger storm events will flood the swale and go into the leaching pits.
Okay.
First one inch rainfall will be stored in the swales.
Okay.
Like I digress, one of the, one of the things or advantages about the detention area at the end of lot sixteen is they could deposit the snow in that, that tension area.
So in the event that that does happen and then you have a thaw and you've got the overage of snow in your detention areas, where does the water go? It stays in the road, correct?
Well, no, that detention area is fairly large. So anything you deposit in that basin will stay in that basin. It's exceedingly large. As for the swales.
Your soil profile, Jack?
I beg your pardon?
Have you guys provided a soil profile?
We can't provide a soil profile. What, what I did is I researched the board health percolation test data to determine what the geology is. This is a carpet for sand.
And I think that's how you got, is there any more done with the septic systems with regard to design other than tropically here on this plan?
No, no percolation tests have been performed on these sites. Again, we relied on percolation data of surrounding houses. And if you're familiar with this area, Percival Road as well east of Nunacar goes away. None of that area has any drainage on it at all. So my point is that this is a very lomy sand, sandy environment and most water does not travel horizontally. It travels vertically. There are no confining layers generally in this area. So most rains, like I said, travel vertically. They don't travel horizontally.
I'm sorry. Oh, sorry, Jack.
No, so I just, that's just the nature of these films. And if you were to go to that subdivision to the southwest of us that was built several years ago, that was built, it was approved and that particular subdivision has no road drainage at all. So, and they've managed to survive. I think again, it's because it has a very sandy, lomy environment.
Again, I'll, I'll, I'll ask one more, but you, you understand that those arguments are pretty ambiguous at this point. We, we need at least some kind of referral or waivers or whatever from health to make a determination on this because you've got sixteen septic systems and a drainage system that's all, that handles this whole area with not one soil profile, all in a close proximity of each other. Whether it goes vertically or laterally, you still jam sixteen septic systems individually and three big retention areas. It would be good to know what the soil profile is on paper.
I absolutely agree with you, Scott. Absolutely.
Just to add, just to add to that, I did the house that's right next to this, that subdivision and put the septic system in when I built it. And the percolation test was less than two inches to the minute on it. So the soil is good, but we will provide a percolation test so you can see the soil evaluations.
I appreciate it. And my last one is um, more of a comment than a, Jack, I would much rather have my kid cross the road once than drive by sixteen uh, driveways backing out as far as the, the sidewalk is concerned personally.
Okay. The message is clear.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Let's see who's next.
Mr. Chairman, just, just for the record, just so I can straighten this out. So Mr. Montero, you mentioned that if there's an association, is there or isn't there going to be an association?
I, I haven't decided on that, but if an association needs to be established, it will be.
So if you don't have an association, how can you take care of any of these items that are going to have to be private? If you basically said that you have to have private trash removal, private snow removal, it's a private road, you have private maintenance.
That, that's because it came from, from the DPW.
But, but without, without an association?
Then I would, then I would have established an association.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Mary?
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm a little confused here. It just doesn't seem to me that the application is complete if we don't have lists of waivers. If we don't know some of all of these questions, just speak to the fact that it seems premature for us even to talk about this. We don't have, we have a peer reviewer who requested information but doesn't have it.
Thank you, Mary. Either, I don't know who might be best to answer this question, either Mr. Montero or Mr., Mr. Colley. Last meeting, I expressed concern about the entrance to the proposed project. You basically have two more, two merging roads with Percival Road. Obviously Percival Road's existing and merges off and then you have your proposed road that goes into your development. And I know in the past that we've heard comments from the town engineer and Mass DEP about how entrances to main roads, there needs to be a certain amount of feet or distance between each. So I'm wondering if you followed up with town engineering or the Mass DEP to clear up how exactly this is permissible.
You asking Jack or you asking?
Either, either one, whoever has the answer.
Well.
Or can, or can provide further comment.
Well, basically the road that you see that comes on Trotting Park Road is actually on my property. They have, if you look at lot number one, the corner of lot number one, all of those houses that go to the right of the property, they're basically the land but my property. So their easement actually goes to the left of that lot line, which was never, which was never connected in the original, in the original easement that was given because it was supposed to be attached to Mill Way, which went back to nineteen forty-four. So just out of convenience, they started just making that left turn on there. But if you look at the, the lot line on lot number one, they actually have only actually seven feet. So they were supposed to continue that, their easement to the left of that property. That's where the confusion is coming in.
So you're saying that Percival Road would be, have to reestablished outside of?
It's, it's not Percival Road. Percival Road actually goes behind the Cape Verdean Club to, and straight. That was originally was called Goat Alley. It was just, it was just a way of getting down over to Trotting Park Road. So it's, it's really not actually Percival Road.
All right. So whatever that entrance is, are you saying that that needs to be realigned and off of, will that, will that have to be realigned and then taken off?
That's up to them with their easement because they're on my property.
But, but still, that's been there long before this project and this proposed project. So how is it permissible to have? But whether it's taken off your property and it's a few feet away or if it's what I'm looking at at the plan, it looks like it's going to be side by side or merging together until it splits off. How, how is that allowed?
Well, basically if the, if the road is joined, they can either have signs out there saying yielding. So they know if they're making that left-hand turn coming on a Trotting Park Road, they know there's a road being merged into that from that subdivision.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Montero. Mr. Colley, I don't know if you can provide any comment about this issue I have?
A little bit because it was my opinion all along that what we should be doing is providing or allowing them, them, that is the inhabitants off of Percival Road or Mr. Harris, Overhertz and Alerti, Old Curry um, access onto the improved road that's being designed. We can't make them, but what I wanted to do was provide a paved surface from the existing traveled way that would have a series of yield signs that allows them to go onto the proposed road, then disembark on tour, enter into Trotting Park Road. I'm not sure that can happen politically, but I know from an engineering standpoint, we could do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Colley. Uh, with respect to the proposed Hammerhead turnaround between lots fourteen and fifteen, I have some serious concern with you know, basically shared driveways for lots fourteen and fifteen. Would it be easier if those driveways are basically reconfigured? So I'm just going to throw it out there. If lot fourteen has the driveway coming in off of the Westerly Lot Line and then maybe fifteen has their driveway coming in off of the eastern side. So that would be closest to lot sixteen. And then that would give you free and clear access for that Hammerhead turn.
Yep. The, the houses could be flip-flopped if, if that, if that is a concern.
All right. I have serious concern about that.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a real good idea. Only drawback is we have a lot of pavement here, but other than that, no, it's a real good idea.
All right. Um, especially since the board brought it up, maybe if you can take that under consideration.
Can certainly look at it.
Thank you.
Okay. I think a point of order too. The peer review engineer did receive copies of the plans. And to be fair to him, he asked us for one thing in addition to the plans and that was the stormwater calculations. I told Mr. Montero uh, just the other day that I was hesitant to give him the stormwater calculations until we did a little more work. I, because I found mistake in one of the watershed areas. So what we will do is between now and then, perform the perk test as Scott suggested. And then forward the amended stormwater to the peer engineer.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Colley. Uh, so I will turn it over to public comment at this time, if anyone, and I see there's a couple of comments in the Q and A. Uh, so I will get to that. Uh, if anyone out there has a question, comment or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. And we will get you elevated in a moment. And while I'm waiting for anyone to hit their raised hand, I'll just turn to the question and answer. This is from Pat Harris, who isn't, isn't a butter. Uh, she states that the developer assumes that school buses will come into the development to pick up children. Has the school department agreed to this plan? Uh, she also says, I disagree with the engineer's comments about drainage. I have lived on Percival Road for more than ten years. Water regularly collects in the dirt road portion of Percival Road. So thank you, Pat Harris for that. Water regularly collects in the dirt road portion of Percival Road. So thank you, Pat Harris, for that. And again, if anyone is out there with a question, comment, or concern, click the raised hand icon, and we will get you elevated in a moment. Right. Not seeing anyone for public comment, but, uh, either Mr. Montero or Mr. Colley, would you like to address Ms. Harris's concerns?
Yeah, I think I can comment by saying it. Certainly there's standing water on the, the travel way, because that's either a hard pen or a macadam type of surface, so that there would be standing water on that. And the reason it's standing is that the road is either rutted partially or it's just extremely flat, so the water sits on it. Um, that doesn't surprise me at all, and that's the reason why opposing squares with leaching principles. We know the tune is concrete, not horse, and it needs the water needs a place to go. So, um, I don't, I think her second comment was, was it school buses?
Yeah, about the, the, uh, proposed placement of, uh, the school bus, I'll just call it school bus shelter or the, um, the bench, wha- whatever is being proposed, I think.
Well, I think it's a great idea. Again, we have a twenty-foot section of, uh, property between the edge of the road and the edge of the property. So I'm sure they could have a school bus station somewhere across from lot two or three, or maybe the south, southerly corner of lot one, which would might be consistent with the sidewalks being moved to that side as well.
And then, of course, for a school bus to be able to, uh, properly turn around, you, you definitely need that free and clear hammerhead, right?
Yeah, you would have to have that hammerhead at the end.
All right. Okay. Any follow-up questions from the board? All right. Not seeing any. All right. Uh, Mr. Montero, uh, we, we are looking at a continuation here. Uh, I do also want to point out at this moment, uh, this application is still administratively incomplete. Most notably, uh, the waivers. I know that you indicated through testimony this evening uh, that you're anticipating adding a few more waivers. Uh, so absolutely, definitely for the next meeting. Um, and I'm sure you and, uh, Mr., um, Mackenzie, thank you. You and Mr. Mackenzie can please submit a list of waivers to the board. Um, like I said, this is still in, in, incomplete administratively. Um, if there aren't things such as waivers presented to this board at the next meeting, then you're risking a denial from this board. Uh, and there's also still, uh, Mr. Colley, to your point, thank you for pointing that out, but I know that there's still, uh, information that needs to be passed along to our peer engineer so they can appropriately review this project if that could be done for the next meeting. Um, I, I would appreciate that. All right. And Noreen, I will defer to you in terms of the next date, which will be, I'm guessing, live and in person at Town Hall.
Mr. Chairman, also the, uh, request for a traffic engineer review of the corner.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Ken, sorry about that.
And a complete list of referrals, Mr. Chairman.
Good. I'm sorry, Scott. What, what was that?
And also a complete list of referrals from town, uh, departments.
Complete referrals? Okay.
And I also want to make sure they get the information on the wells.
Wells, yep.
Uh, they may want to, they may want to check with the school department.
Uh, Oh, if a bus would even be allowed down there?
I, I, I don't even, I don't even know without a full turnaround, uh, what's going to be allowed down there. I, a bus isn't going to back into someone else's yard. They're not going to back up on the street. Um, I would assume the fire department's going to have concerns that they have to worry about an easement that's left open in someone's driveway. And I don't know where else you can put a turnaround or a hammerhead on the current plan, because they're trying to fit so much in on the site with the, with the new driveway road. So realistically.
Complete set of plans with referrals, so everybody can, can chime in on it at town departments.
Yeah, and also, and make sure they know, Mr. Chairman, that we have deadlines too on that information that gets submitted, so.
All right.
Prior hearings.
And can that traffic engineer, do, do we need a, or to Noreen, for that traffic engineer for that review, do we need a, I, I, I always forget the name of it. It's a, is it a fifty-three G account?
Fifty-three G.
Fifty-three G. Did I get it right?
Yes.
It did, didn't it? All right.
Yeah. So what I can do is, um, where we already have a peer engineer on the project, I will start with them and find out what capacity they have or not to deal with that. Um, if they're not able to, um, I do have a couple of, uh, traffic engineers that I have worked with. I know typically when you're looking at this volume and this number of houses, you know, it's not the trips per se that they're interested in. And I, I think perhaps the board is probably more interested in site distance here and the effect of the driveway and where it merges. So it might be that you can get best information from the peer engineer, but I will follow up with them on that as well.
Thank you, Noreen. And then in terms of, uh, next best date that we have.
Yep. So I'm going to actually propose that we meet a little bit earlier on June tenth, then you might typically, uh, continue a hearing. Uh, the purpose for that is the board has a very heavy volume of hearings coming up. And so this is more of a strategic placement where we have a date that we will have a little bit more time to discuss this. So it may be that we can only get so much done on that date, and we may need to continue further. But I think that that should give time for the peer engineer to review the material that they've received and to attend that hearing. So it would be, uh, June tenth.
Mr. Chairman, in all fairness to the applicant, is that enough time to get all the, what we need from them?
I was just about to ask that, Scott. Thank you. Mr. Montero? Is that enough time, June tenth, or would you need more?
Well, I'll ask Jack on a couple in regards to the protest. Uh, I, I can be doing that with Jack when, when, uh, he, uh, does the soil evaluation. As far as the, um, the other things with the traffic engineer and, um, locating the wells, I'd have to leave that up to Jack.
Okay. I, I think the weak link here is the traffic engineer, because we have to go out, we have to survey to the north and south of Trot- Trotting Park Road, assemble the plan, then give it to him, whoever that might be. So, um, I just don't see it happening between now and June tenth. The other issues, though, the well, the sidewalks, the turning radius, we can address those. I just, I don't believe, truly believe we can have answers from whomever the traffic engineer is at the moment by June tenth.
Okay. So I guess then I, I would apologize and offer you July eighth would be the next possible meeting. And again, it's strictly because we have so many hearings that we're scheduling right now.
And can I ask a quick file question, just because I, I've looked at it real quick and I probably should have looked at it before, but, uh, Mr. Montero, so have you actually closed on this property or is it still in process?
Still in the process. I'll probably be closing on it before the next hearing.
Okay. So my question is, um, from the file I'm looking here, the last extension I see from the purchase and sale uh, only went through November of twenty twenty. So do you have a current extension?
Everything is on file with Noreen. The extension went through June thirtieth.
So if the extension is going through June thirtieth, you, just because of our schedule, and if we have another meeting, we've had three without information, you may be looking into making sure you have another extension?
Absolutely.
And on the purchase and sale, it did say on here that it was subject to all engi- all engineering approvals and also perk tests before closing. So did you just decide not to do the perk test that were in the agreement?
No, that's just usually a standard form when you're buying a piece of property.
Okay, because it was put in as an additional provision versus a standard.
And again, like I said, I built the house next door to this property, and I know the soils over there, the soils were, the percolation test was less than two minutes to the inch.
All right. Uh, so we are looking at that. Sorry. What day was that again?
July, July eighth.
Ju- July eighth. All right. So would anyone like to make that motion then?
Don't move.
Second. Oh, Bob, you're, you're muted. I see that you're talking, but.
Yeah, sorry, Noreen. There, there, there is, there is a chance I won't be here on the eighth, but I could, I could do the Mullen Rule, so I'm not that worried about it. I just want the people to know in advance that July eighth, I mean, I'd be available.
Appreciate it, Bob. All right. So anyone, would anyone like to make that motion then for the continuance to July eighth?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Motion made by Scott and second by Ed. Roll call vote. Bob?
Uh, Robert Dugan, aye.
Thank you, Bob. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, aye.
Thank you, Ed. Ken?
Ken Forman, aye.
Thank you, Ken. Scott?
Rod Zalinski, aye.
Thank you, Scott. And TJ Hury, aye, passes unanimously. Mr. Montero and Mr. Colley, thank you very much for tonight, and we will see you here next time.
You're welcome.
Oh, no, you won't see us here on Zoom. It is live in person at Falmouth Town Hall.
Real deal.
If it's a real deal, we'll see everyone then, and everyone in the attendees list who are members of the public, we will see everyone there live in person. It's been a while, so looking forward to it. Thank you, everyone. Noreen, I promised you I'd be saying that as much as possible.
I know. It's hard to remember. We're, we're in a mode now where we've done Zoom for so long.
Right. Well, the, the more I say it, the more I'll remember. All right. So up next we have, uh, application sixteen dash twenty-one, Noonan, one eighty-three Surf Drive in Falmouth. It's a request for a special permit to raise and rebuild the non-conforming dwelling and increasing law coverage by structures. If we could please elevate Attorney Clower. And Attorney Clower, if you're out there, if you can hit the raised hand icon, I know we have a lot of people out there tonight. Just to help out elevating you. All right. There we go.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Evening.
Um, I had submitted correspondence a few weeks ago regarding a concern over the appointment of the associate members, because I'm not sure that's correct procedurally, and I didn't know how the board came down on that.
All right. Regarding the appointment of the members?
Yeah.
All right. Yep. Uh, so we, we were in receipt of your correspondence. Thank you for that. Uh, Noreen circulated it to the board. Um, it's at least my opinion, I, you know, you can't really fight with black and white letter law. Attorney Clower, you, you, you do point that out correctly. Um, but I think the facts of what happened versus the black and white letter law are a little different. Um, you know, I, as a chair, I did not act unilaterally. I opened it up to the board and we had a discussion about it. Um, so I, I could say that Mr. Foreman and Mr. Zalinski voluntarily uh, allowed me to appoint, uh, Mr. Morris and Ms. Barry as voting members on that application. So that's how I, that's how I view the whole thing, at least. I'm not sure if any other board members have any other opinion, but I know al- ultimately it li- it lies with me as the chair as to how to proceed, so.
Sure. And, uh, my, my concern is just that I'm reading the, reading the master general laws and reading the, the town code and, and the rules. It doesn't seem as though it's a discretionary matter by either the chair or the members of the board. It seems that, um, only in events where they can't or, or, or are unable to or, or, or absent, um, are the associate members appointed. My concern is, is just trying to avoid a procedural error, because I don't, you know, I think, I think that this board can and, and should approve this, and I don't want to provide grounds for an appeal um, of this moving forward, because my client's eager to move, move forward with this.
I just understood Attorney Clower. Um, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward. I mean, if, if, if you believe that's an appealable issue, then it's an appealable issue and we, and we can move forward with the project tonight, uh, with the members, uh, as, as designated. Uh, but I'm, I'm certainly ready to, to jump into this hearing and hear some more about it.
Sure. So you, you'd want to proceed with the, with the members as appointed at the last hearing?
Correct. Yeah. Um, so again, just, uh, because you, I'm, I'm told it is Zoom, so the voting members on this project are myself, Bob Dugan, Ed Van Kuren, Mary Berry, and James Morris.
Okay. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the board's consideration on that, just trying to make sure we, um, cross our Ts and dot our Is, so to speak.
It's appreciated, Attorney Clower. Thank you.
For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmed Clower Law Firm here in Falmouth, and I represent the applicants, Joseph and Mary Noonan, the owners of one eighty-three Surf Drive. I'm joined tonight by, uh, the applicants, as well as Tim Santos of Holmes McGrath and Greg Serunian of ResCom Architecture. Um, if we could elevate, um, Greg and Tim, just in case there are any questions that come up that may need their, uh, their expertise, that would be really appreciated.
And again, if they could click the raised hand icon just to help out here, see that Tim's raised his hand.
As a, as a brief recap, following the last hearing, um, we are seeking permission to raise and rebuild the existing non-conforming dwelling at one eighty-three Surf Drive. That property's on a lot of seven thousand six hundred and three square feet in the RC zoning district, and it's in a VE fifteen flood zone. Due to the location in the velocity zone, uh, the renovations trigger the necessity of FEMA compliance, and we must raise and rebuild pursuant to the building code and FEMA regulations. The structure must be raised to be two feet above the floods on elevation, which brings it up to elevation seventeen, about twelve feet above the existing grade. Due to the existing non-conformities, uh, and the lot coverage by structure, uh, being twenty-one point eight, this requires a special permit pursuant to two forty-three C and two forty-sixty-nine E. Three C allows for alterations to non-conforming structures, provided that it's not substantially more detrimental than what exists. And two forty-sixty-nine E allows for lot coverage by structures above twenty percent. Since the last meeting, we submitted a footprint comparison plan of the previously proposed building to the currently proposed dwelling, a ridge height comparison, a solar study, as well as eight letters of support to neighbors and the butters. Uh, I'd like to start by addressing some of the concerns and comments that were raised in Attorney Kirk's letter, uh, submitted on behalf of his client Gloria Arkeys. Uh, the letter alleges that the lot lacks legal frontage along a way.
So Mr. Mr. Cloud, not to interrupt, it, it, it's my error. So, um, there was a letter submitted by Attorney Kirk, and it did come in on May eighteenth, received May twentieth. So where this is Zoom and it's not in the regular pack, I just need to read this into the file. And then that might give some idea of what, what Mr. Clower is, um, is commenting on. And there were, you know, eight letters of support in here, and Mr. Clower did submit all that information he discussed, as well as, um, shadow studies. Um, so this is a, uh, letter dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one from Edward Kirk regarding appeal sixteen twenty-one, Joseph and Mary Noonan, Seago Lane Surf Drive. Dear ladies and gentlemen, the following comments are submitted on behalf of Gloria Arce's, the immediate abutter to the Noonan property. Uh, first title, the Noonan lot lacks legal frontage on an approved way. Holmes and McGrath has submitted a letter dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, which is attached as exhibit four on the applicant's submission dated May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. McGrath letter refers to a nineteen sixty-three plan recorded at book one eighty, page thirty-five at Barnsville Registry of Deeds. This plan was endorsed by the planning board as approval not required. The purpose of the plan seems to have been limited to a reconfiguration of four lots previously shown on a plan recorded nineteen fifty-one. A plan which is endorsed as approval not required does not confer any zoning protection on the land shown on the plan. At the time, the nineteen sixty-three plan was endorsed. The specific zoning requirements for the district was ten thousand square feet of area and fifty feet of frontage. The recording of the plan would appear to have created four new undersized lots. The nineteen sixty-three plan was a redivision of lots A, B, C, and D as shown on a plan recorded nineteen fifty-one at Plan Book one oh four, page one twenty-one dash two. That plan in turn was a division of land shown on plan dated March nineteen fifty-one and recorded at book ninety-eight, page seventy-one. Copies of the three plans are attached here too as exhibits one, two, and three. The process which resulted in the original creation of the Noonan lot was the opposite of that which usually occurs. When the developer or owner of land wishes to extend an existing subdivision road over other land which he owns, if the further extension of the subdivision road is going to result in a dead end, the owner would ordinarily if the further extension of the subdivision road is going to result in a dead end, the owner would ordinarily be required to provide a turning radius for cul-de-sac purposes of accommodating fire, safety, and other vehicles. The process employs, the process employed in this case was the reverse. The owner of the land abutting the terminus of the existing subdivision road came from the other direction and carved out an irregular shaped parcel of his own land in order to create a small shared staging area from which vehicles associated with two adjoining lots could cross over and access the previously approved subdivision road. Title to the staging area remains a question. While it is not altogether clear whether the irregular shaped parcel located adjacent to lot C and D can qualify as a way in quotations, approved by the board in accordance with their regulations as an extension of the existing way. What is clear is that Noonan's Lot D was illegal from the outset. Even if the irregular shaped parcel was part of a lawfully approved way, Lot D only abutted the way for a distance of thirty feet. In nineteen fifty-one, the minimum frontage requirement lot was fifty feet. See nineteen forty-seven bylaw attached as exhibit number four. My client is also concerned that in these tight circumstances, it will be very difficult for the project to have an area for parking and storage of vehicles and equipment without trespassing on her fee interest in Seago Lane. Uh, title of the submitted material avoids a direct comparison between existing and proposed structures. The Noonans have submitted certain elevations which are intended to show the relative size of certain existing structures in relationship to the structure being proposed by the Noonans. Noticeably, absent from these materials submitted are elevations which would compare the size of the existing Noonan structure with proposed Noonan structure. The comparison should show the existing one-story structure with the proposed two-story structure superimposed slash ghosted over the existing structure when viewed from the north, south, east, and west. In a number of instances, the comparative elevations which the Noonans have submitted did not deal with structures which are on Seago Lane. Rather, they are on Mill Road, Bywater Court, or have frontage on Surf Drive rather than Seago Lane. The Noonans have also submitted a series of emails from three property owners on Seago Lane who support their application. The owners of the single-story house at ten Seago Lane have made clear that they too would like to expand their structure, and therefore they have a particular personal reasons for supporting and not opposing the Noonan application. The same is true of the Sepians, whose address is now one eighty-five Surf Drive, but whose access to their property is by way of Seago Lane. They fully intend to raise and reconstruct their own property if the Noonan application is approved. The Ro- Robertos, whose house is located at fifteen Seago Lane behind Mrs. Arcees, already have a substantial two-story structure. There are five other owners in Seago Lane who have not offered support for the Noonan application, and my client, Mrs. Arcees, is expressly opposed. The additional letters being offered from the owners whose homes front on Surf Drive, Mill Road, and Bywater Court should be disregarded. Standards of the decision. The application of this project is governed by provision two forty dash three C, one A through C, which by reference incorporates the provision two forty dash two sixteen. Therefore, the applicant must show that proposed change, extension, or alteration shall not substantially so not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming use or structure. The bylaw specifically provides that the extension of a structure may be considered a detriment after the Board of Appeals considers whether the extension extends or creates a new dimensional non-conformity, impairs views or vistas, or does not reasonably conform to the average dimension found in the neighborhood. Under the provisions of two forty dash two sixteen, the applicant must demonstrate that proposed use will not have adverse effect with overbalance, that would, would overbalance its beneficial effects on either the neighborhood or the town in view of the particular characteristics of the site. The determination shall indicate what the proposed use will be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter and shall include consideration of each of the following. A, adequacy of the site in terms of size of the proposed use. B, suitability of the site for proposed use. C, impact on traffic flow and safety. D, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. Including among the stated purposes of the bylaw are the lessening of congestion in the streets to prevent overcrowding of land and to avoid undue concentration of population and to conservative value of land and buildings. In conclusion, one, Lot D being the Noonan property does not qualify as a lawful building lot as it never had legal lawful frontage on an approved way and is not eligible to apply for the relief requested. Two, the lot is not adequate in terms of size for the proposed use. Three, where the lot has never had legal lawful frontage on an approved way, the site is not suitable for the proposed use. Four, the proposed project will have a negative impact on traffic flow and safety. Five, the proposed project will have an adverse impact on views and vistas now available to the residents of Seago Lane. Six, the proposed project will have a negative impact on the visual character of the neighborhood when viewed from nearby public and private ways. And seven, the applicant has not demonstrated that there are any beneficial impacts to the neighborhood or the town. Respectively submitted, uh, Edward W. Kirk with a carbon copy to Kevin Clower Esquire.
All right. Thank you, Bob, and my apologies, Attorney Clower. I should have had uh, Bob read that into the record earlier.
That is quite all right. Thank you for reading it in. I'd like to address some of the concerns that were raised in Attorney Kirk's letter. The first being the allegation that the lot lacks legal frontage along a way. This is a distraction. It's a red herring, and it simply shouldn't be a consideration. We have a pre-existing non-conforming structure that's much more than ten years old. It was built in nineteen fifty-two. It's entitled to protection under master general laws and the zoning bylaw. While this allegation is irrelevant, it's also incorrect. The lot was created in nineteen fifty-one pursuant to a subdivision plan, which Attorney Kirk actually submitted. And if I may share my screen briefly.
Go right ahead.
This is the subdivision plan that was created, and it is approved by the Falmouth Planning Board. And as a subdivision plan, it is reviewed and approved as to zoning. The area in question um, was, was carved out of the lots C and D and merged with Seago Lane. That's noted on this plan by the dash line. This provides frontage for both lots C and D, and the owners have the right to use the way known as Seago Lane asset forth in an agreement recorded at the registry in nineteen fifty-one. In nineteen fifty-two, the town changed the minimum lot size. It was increased to ten thousand square feet, but the revised bylaw stated that all lots duly recorded prior to the date of approval by the Attorney General, which have an area of seventy-five hundred square feet, may be used without the necessity of applying to the Board of Appeals. No minimum frontage requirement was set forth in this bylaw. One eighty-three Surf Drive was built in nineteen fifty-two. Attorney Kirk's letters alleges that we avoided comparison between the existing and proposed, which is simply untrue. We've submitted significant information as to both the existing structure and the proposed dwelling. The board specifically requested a comparison plan between what was previously applied for and what's currently appro- uh, proposed, which is what we submitted. The letter seeks to discredit or otherwise cheapen letters of support. A number of the butters, including direct abutters and owners along Seago Lane, have voiced their support for the project. Attorney Kirk and Miss Arkeys don't get to decide which should be disregarded. None of them should be disreg- disregarded. They're entitled to as much of a voice as Miss Arkeys is. There's an old adage in the legal practice. If the facts are against you, argue the law. If the law is against you, argue the facts. If the law and the facts are against you, pound the table and yell like hell. That's what is happening here. There are no solid grounds to objection to this project. Other than the views, the view concerns one a butter. So instead, they're throwing stumbling blocks, every stumbling block they can think of in front of us in an effort to distract the board. I would ask you not to let it work. Following the logic of Miss Arkeys, applicant, the applicants could not make any alterations to the structure at all, since almost any improvements will trigger FEMA compliance. It is a pre-existing non-conforming structure that's entitled to protection by master general laws and the town. If the house, and I said this at the last hearing, the house were simply raised on pilings in its current position, shape, and design, the impact would be more detrimental to Miss Arkeys than what the applicants have proposed. They're trying to improve that. They've moved the house further south and west. They've angled it as to, to detract as little as possible from her view. And Miss Arkeys will retain a considerable view of a trunk river, surf drive, and Vineyard Sound. And yet this project is still met with resistance. It's clear that no concession other than not improving the property at all will be acceptable. It's important to look at what is being sought, both in terms of the proposal, but also in the concessions and adjustments the applicant has made, as well as the surrounding properties. Here we have a non-conforming front yard setback that's eliminated. It's improved to twenty-eight feet. The three-foot contour setback is going to be improved from nine feet to ten. There's no new additional non-conformities. And the proposal includes over fifteen hundred square feet of mitigation plantings, which is a visual improvement and also better protects the resource area. The proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. And coupled with the compliance with FEMA regulations, the plantings, the elimination of a non-conformity, and the improvement of the non-conformity, it's a significant improvement. This will be a larger, more visible home, but it is very similar to other surrounding properties. As previously discussed, we looked at the size and height of nearby properties, twenty-six dwellings within three hundred feet. Nine of those had larger footprints, eight had larger gross floor areas. This is not out of line at all for the neighborhood, and in fact, is quite reasonable for the neighborhood. The increase is largely necessitated by the compliance of the FEMA standards. It's also important to look at the changes that the applicants have made since they withdrew last year. The setback to the north to Miss Arkeys' property has been increased seven feet from sixteen feet to twenty-three feet. The setback to Vineyard Sound, uh, the waters of Vineyard Sound has been increased. The front yard setback is still eliminated, but it's improved from twenty-six feet to twenty-eight. The building height was reduced from thirty-five feet to thirty-four and a half. The proposed lot coverage by structure was reduced from twenty-three point two percent down to twenty-one point eight percent. And the gross floor area of the dwelling has been reduced from three thousand five hundred and twenty-eight square feet to two thousand eight hundred and eight, a reduction of almost seven hundred square feet. The applicants and their team have worked hard to find ways, ways to reduce the scope and impact, and to reduce the potential effects to address the board's concerns and those of Miss Arkeys. Further, this is a project that the neighborhood supports. The neighbors feel it fits the neighborhood. The neighbors feel it's appropriate. The people who actually live here are in support of it. It's difficult to say that this does not fit the neighborhood when that's the case. If this is approved, it achieves a really fantastic end result. We have substantial improvement to the project. We have compliance with flood zone standards, which is what we want from, from property owners. We have elimination of a non-conformity. We have improvement to another non-conformity. We have substantial mitigation plantings and a much more useful home for the owner. Based on the information I provided, I think it's clear uh, that the proposed revised residence is not substantially more detrimental than what exists, and it meets the standards two forty-three C, two forty-sixty-nine E, and two forty-two sixteen. The applicants have made many changes and concessions to address the concerns of the board and Miss Arkeys to arrive at a design that is useful and appropriate for the neighborhood, and have done so in a responsible and efficient manner. For these reasons, I think that this board can and should grant the special permit. I'd be happy to address any other questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Clower. We will turn it to board questions. Uh, Bob, anything?
Yeah, so I have a question, Attorney Clower. So you said that an A and R plan um, does give zoning protection. I have always been under the impression that an A and R plan, just by the fact it's approval not required, doesn't, so. Do you have something you can submit to the board that shows A and R plans give zoning protection?
So, uh, I'd be happy to clarify that, Mr. Dugan. What, the, the plan that created this lot was, it was a subdivision plan. They added that portion of the property to the road. That, that is a road. It is a subdivision plan, so that is not an A and R plan. It's a subdivision plan. The, the lots were altered by an A and R plan twelve years later. They were, the lot lines were changed minor, in a minor way, but the plan that created the lots was a subdivision plan.
Okay, so the case, yeah, so the, so the case you're making is the A and R plan doesn't matter because they were protected by the original plan?
It was, it was a valid, it was a valid non-conforming lot. They made minor changes to it after the houses were already constructed on the lots.
I was, I was only, I, yeah, I was only actually asking because you said that A and R plans do give zoning protection, and I just wanted to clear that, that I didn't think.
If, if I said that, that was, that was an area. The, the plan that, that created this lot was a subdivision plan filed in nineteen fifty-one.
And I guess the only other comment I have right now is you did make a statement that it appears that no improvement at all at this property would be something that would be acceptable. Um, the only reason I take a little issue with that is because, um, you know, we were all here in the past on the same property, and there were multiple comments on that, at that time with that last plan. And I know a lot of the comments had to do with reducing the height of the structure because there were comments about it may be looking too large or too bulky. Now, you did say that they did reduce it, but I mean realistically, you've come down six inches, which visually doesn't really even have an impact. So I just, I just want to let you know, it isn't that no improvement would be something that would be acceptable. It's that at that time, at least in my case, we were looking for certain things to be adjusted, which I had kind of expected would be on this plan. I was kind of surprised that the plan you have now wasn't adjusted more than, you know, based on prior comments.
So I'd like to clarify that, sir, because what, what, when, when I made that comment that no change would be acceptable, I was talking in the eyes of Miss Arkeys, not in the eyes of the board. And, and I want to make that very clear because that is not what I was implying. Um, I do think that the applicant has made some changes to the plan. The height did come down. It was only six inches, but it did come down. And the square footage of the, of the house was reduced by, by over seven hundred square feet. Uh, the footprint was reduced uh, by a pretty substantial margin, so lot coverage went down from twenty-three point two to twenty-one point eight. I, I do think they've made, I think perhaps more concessions than you were giving them credit for right there. But just to clarify, my statement saying that no improvement would be allowable was not in reference to the board. It was in reference to, in the eyes of Miss Arkeys, based on the comments that have been submitted.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. James, anything?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Attorney Clower, um, just getting back to the subdivision plan, just to make sure I'm clear in your testimony. Terms of the allegation about the fee in the roadway, is it your testimony that that's a roadway and that the fee property rights are only to pass over, that, that ownership out to the center line is not alleged, based on your title research?
I mean, even if there is ownership out to the center line, it's still subject to the rights of others to pass over it. Uh, that said, in nineteen fifty-one, there was an agreement signed as by the owners of what is now the Noonan property and the owner who owned effectively all of uh, what is now Seago Lane, granting the owners of the Noonan property the right to use the, the way. Uh, and that was recorded in nineteen fifty-one, so they, they clearly have a right to use that way. So, so even if there is a, a fee ownership to the center line, it is still only subject to the rights of others to pass over it.
Thank you. With regards to the elevation issues uh, and concern raised in Attorney Kirk's letter, do you have a a rendering with the two oversights showing what the what existing structure is and what the proposed structure is?
No, we didn't show the, the existing versus proposed on the elevations. We have, and we had what was, um, what was requested from us was an elevation comparison, which we did submit showing what's proposed versus, as compared with the other properties that exist on, along the area. Uh, and we also submitted an overlay showing the previously proposed house versus the currently proposed house, which is something that Mr. Dugan had specifically requested. Um, so those are the things that we submitted.
I have no other questions at this time. Uh, Mr. Clower, I know your client did rework this considerably, and it's not gone unnoticed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Uh, and I see that Mister Serunian uh, has his hand raised. If he could be elevated, please. All right, uh, Ken, any questions?
No, I do not have any questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Ken. Mary?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mary. Scott, anything?
Good, thank you.
All right, and I'm good at the moment. Uh, Mister Serunian, I know we just got you elevated. I didn't know if you wanted to contribute to the conversation at the moment, or if you had anything? I think he's got one of those privacy filters as a, as a back screen. All right. Any follow-up questions from the board? All right, we'll turn it to public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon, and we will get to you in a moment. All right, we do have Attorney Kirk. If we could elevate Attorney Kirk, please. All right, Attorney Kirk, you've been elevated, so you'll have to uh, turn on your microphone and turn on your video if you do have that capability.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I hope that I have unmuted. But I still do not have the video capability.
Not to worry, we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh. This uh, project has gotten a lot of attention from the board, careful attention. Um, there, there's material in the previous file that I did not uh, submit uh, independently this time because um, it's, it's there for the review if uh, the board chooses, chooses to do so, including some photographs. Uh, and I do want to say that on behalf of my client that we, we do notice that there have been efforts made uh, to reduce uh, to some extent, the size of. the size of the, the project. And as I said in our last hearing, it's a difficult situation. Uh, and because of the FEMA regulations that make life a lot difficult, more difficult for what otherwise would be, uh, perhaps a less complicated situation. Uh, Ms. Arkeys, she, she was the owner, she and her husband were the owners of fourteen, I think, of these lots here. They were sort of the developers and she's had a longstanding interest in the health of that neighborhood. And when they first acquired the property, I think it was from Mr. Bardellis, they recorded certain restrictions in terms of height. Uh, so that residential structures purchased by new owners could not go above that certain height because it would detract probably from, uh, the value of the property and, and the enjoyment of the situation, but by the owners, those, uh, recorded restrictions have expired and are not applicable in any private enforcement, uh, scenario. But she still maintains the same concerns about the neighborhood and the adverse impact of, uh, the increase in height and size of new construction. And speaking in broad terms, I think that the approval of this project and the other two applications that I, the emails would suggest would be coming close on there, uh, on the heels of this one would, would probably forever alter the character of the Seagull Lane neighborhood. As you come along Surf Drive from either direction or Down Mill Road, uh, where there were once four very modest sized, single family residences, there'll be a cluster of these elevated residences cheek to jowl, which are going to dominate that landscape in that area. And from inside Seagull Lane, on, on the lane itself, there's going to be more or less a forty-foot high sectioned wall across the field of vision on, on Seagull Lane. This, uh, the lot is undersized in terms of area. Uh, and it appears to have been uh, rendered, although they, I think they may have lost their protection when they further reduced the size and created new lots in nineteen sixty-three. Previously, it was, uh, they were okay with seventy-five hundred, uh, or seventy-six hundred in this case. But the plan shows they went down to seventy-five hundred. And there were three lots that were, from which area was taken away in order to give to, oh, one other lot, which I think is now one eighty-one Surf Drive. I would also point out that among the, um, the nonconformities here is on, on the setback from the river. And there's a fifty-foot setback and the, the section under which they're proceeding, uh, there's a, the, the bylaw says in no case shall the board grant a special permit to bring a residence closer than thirty feet. Well, they're starting off already at nine and they want to increase lot coverage. So I don't think it's consistent with the bylaw or inconsistent, consistent or in harmony with the bylaw to be increasing lot coverage in an area where they're not supposed to be in the first place. Uh, I disagree with Kevin on the business of frontage. Uh, you, you can't make an illegal lot legal. Uh, right from the get-go, this was deficient. Even though it be, fell before the eyes of the planning board, it's sort of hard to conjure up exactly what they were doing here. Uh, they, there's this new parcel. Uh, we don't have any evidence in particular that says this is now approved as a subdivision way. So, but whether it's a subdivision way or just a, a private right of access, uh, this lot has butts it for thirty feet and at the time it was created, it had to be fifty. So you have all these deficiencies on the lot. And I think when you add them all up and you take a lot this size and you put onto it a, a structure, the size that is proposed. And I wish that, or I shouldn't wish, but I think the applicant should have submitted, as Mr. Moore suggested, uh, something to compare. I mean, that's really at the heart of the matter. You, you've got to compare the existing structure with, uh, the proposed structure, not just in terms of linears and setbacks, but the structure itself. I think that's an important part of it. If you look at some of the information, they did submit the elevation. I believe if you look at what's listed as ten Seagull Lane and find a way to compare it to, uh, one eighty-three Surf Drive, you'll see that the difference is enormous. So, for all these reasons, uh, and, and I do think there's a safety issue for, uh, emergency and municipal vehicles down at the end of that street. Uh, where you cross over onto that irregular, irregular shaped parcel, it's very tight quarters. So, that's, uh, basically, uh, you know, the outline of the high points that I would like the board to, uh, to consider. And, uh, once again, I thank you very much for all the time that you, you, you put into this.
Thank you, Attorney Kirk. Let me check in with board members and see if they have any specific questions for Attorney Kirk. Anyone? All right, seeing none. Attorney Kirk, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, uh, anyone out there? I believe we were in public comment. Any anyone out there has a question, comment or a concern? Go ahead and click your raised hand icon. If there's more than one person out there, just click it and we will get to you.
Mr. Hurry, just as a quick point of order, I, I think Mr. Van Kuren might be in the attendees section and not in the panelist section right now.
Attorney Clower, thank you for pointing that out. Let's see. All right, so if we could elevate Ed back into the discussion, please. I think he's, I think he's out there as just Ed. All right, Ed, we got you elevated, but you are muted. Can you unmute yourself so we can check in with you?
There you go.
Hey, you're there. Have you been with us the whole time? Have you heard the?
Yes.
Okay.
Something dropped out and then came back.
No worries, but, but you've, you've heard everything, all the testimony?
Yes.
All right, very good. All right, if we could elevate, uh, Joseph Noonan, please. And again, if anyone out there has a question, comment or concern, click the raised hand icon and we will get to you in a moment. Mr. Noonan, you've been elevated. You'll just have to turn on your video and turn on your microphone. Looks like we got you. Nope, we can't hear you for some reason.
Right. Can you hear me now?
Can hear you now. Welcome.
Thank you very much. And, uh, thank you, uh, zoning board for allowing me to speak. And, um, thank you, Attorney Clower for the representation. And, um, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, um, the introduction. Uh, a little bit of history. Certainly, my wife and I have been residents of Falmouth for a long time. Our existing house has been in our family since nineteen sixty-three. Um, as a matter of fact, Mr. Dugan's mother sold us the property Harriet back in nineteen sixty-three. So, um, there's a long history, is really a long history and of the neighborhood and the neighborhood has certainly uh, changed, uh, dramatically, uh, over the years.
Long before I was born, just to know.
Yeah.
So not, no conflict there, Bob, right? Sorry, Mr. Noonan, go right ahead.
That's all right. So, our plan has always been to retire in Falmouth. Um, uh, I've recently retired. My wife is retired and our plan has always been to uh, retire there. Uh, clearly, the neighborhood, um, everybody around us has, um, gone up because of the FEMA regulations. As a matter of fact, we're one of the last people in the neighborhood to do that. And certainly, the zoning board has, um, in the last five to ten years, has certainly approved all of the houses around us that have gone up. Um, Attorney Kirk and Gloria Arcus, who is our director butter, has purposely thrown broken glass in front of this project for the better part of two years. And it, it's cost myself, um, and my family a lot of money to obviously continue to defend our position to build on this existing property. So, you know, it's, it's unbelievable that we can just keep going on and on in a filibuster type format around all the reasons why we can't do this project when it's, it's literally evident the whole neighborhood has done what we're attempting to do and we're being singled out, which I don't understand. We're being singled out for six inches of height or six feet of setback. It's, it just doesn't make sense. It's, this is absolute, um, craziness on our part as we look at what's really going on here. This is one person's trying to protect their private view who has basically enjoyed unobstructed view of Vineyard Sound for well over forty years. And she has gone to grave expense to throw broken glass in front of this project, to delay it, to do everything possible not to have us start building. Um, just to protect her private view, because there is no other reason why uh, that she is so adamant about this.
Understood, Mr. Noonan. I, I do have you well past the two minutes that we usually do a lot, uh, members of the public, but would you, would you like to summarize your comments?
Yep, I, I just, I would appreciate the board's decision. Uh, I think we've done everything that the board has asked. Uh, at the lot, the last time we've submitted this, these plans and withdrew it. We've made modifications. We've downsized the project to basically satisfy Gloria Arcus and her attorney. We've made revisions at grave expense. We've done everything that the board has asked. We've given shadow analysis. We've given ridgeline analysis. We've done neighborhood analysis. We've done everything possible to satisfy the zoning board's request. And I ask you to approve this project.
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Noonan. Uh, hang, hang in there. Uh, let me just see if there's any questions from individual board members to Mr. Noonan, anyone at all. Go ahead, Scott.
Mr. Noonan, uh, through, uh, testimony, you stated this is going to be a forever home?
Yes.
How many vehicles do you own?
My wife has a car and we have a car, too.
Could you, what are they? Just in size?
They're small SUVs.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else? Uh, any questions for Mr. Noon? All right, seeing none. Mr. Noonan, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much, uh, to all of you.
All right, anyone out there has a question, comment or concern? Click the raised hand icon and we'll elevate you in a moment. Uh, Greg Sarunian has his hand raised again. If we could get him elevated, please. All right, Mr. Sarunian, you, you've been elevated again.
Thank you. I had some technical issues earlier.
No worries.
I just wanted to add a few more comments, uh, as it relates to the structure. So, um, you know, we obviously made revisions to the plan to satisfy the needs of Mr. Noonan's family and that as we looked at making these revisions, that's what drove us to where we are. Um, you know, one of the things that we had pointed out, um, I'm not sure Mr. Clower had indicated is although the height had only got reduced a little bit, we, we did do a sort of mass analysis because we did other things in the design, like stepping in roof dormers, bringing in roof lines. So, the overall mass of the structure, you know, in addition to the footprint, was a, an additional surface area of three hundred and twenty-one square feet. Um, you know, which, you know, that, that's over a ten by thirty-foot area in mass. So although the height didn't come down that much, it was a result of, you know, the footprint changes. You know, I do think the, the mass, you know, the height is one thing, but, you know, it's the height and the mass. Three hundred and twenty-one square feet is pretty significant. And again, it was to the point of, it was developed to suit the family's needs. Anything beyond that, it just didn't work for the family. Happy to ask, uh, yeah, you know, answer any of the questions, but, you know, I do think mass and how things were done in the design are important.
Thank you, Mr. Sarunian. Any questions for Mr. Sarunian from the board?
So is it, is it possible to get a ghost image like was mentioned in the letter of the existing home and the current proposed and also the past proposed in the current one? Just so it's easier to see the change in the massing and the
I, I, you know, obviously I can't do that right now. Um, but, you know, I think one of the things that we've always talked about is that, you know, if we did a two-story house in the existing footprint, how much more detrimental that would be um, to, you know, to the neighbor. So, you know.
So I'm, so I'm, so, so just, you, you see, you know, we do get comments by neighbors and it's comment, you'll get into butters, but we don't just always look at a single butter or multiple butters. We also look at the projects as a whole. And the, the difficulty I have had through the last process and this one is it is very hard for me to visualize, uh, what this change is going to do to what I consider the neighborhood was that, which is entering off of Mill Street, and that's just my opinion. So if you could see some kind of a ghost image like that, like, like I know that they have come down in, in the square footage in bulk, even though they may not have come down that much in height, can you ghost image something like that so we can see how much of a visual impact that is for the neighborhood? It's, it's, you know, the, the houses that are in front, I understand, and I was never on those projects and whatever happened, happened, but when you're coming down the street from Mill Road, they have currently created a blockade wall. It does affect views from public ways. I know you do have to go up for FEMA and it's absolutely that you have to do that. And I understand in most cases, you've got to go a little larger because it's a monetary issue and it may not be worth it to do the renovations if you can't go a little larger. But that's the image that I'm trying to see so I can figure out what the actual effect is of the neighborhood. Now, I didn't think of the ghosting image that came in in Mr. Kirk's letter before. I was kind of looking for some kind of a comparison, but that just seems like something that's easy enough to do, even if we got to the point where the hearing might be closed and we could keep it open, get that information was submitted, just so we'd have that to review. Um, it, it's very hard in any other way to see it. And when you do get a comparison like that, it does the elevations, you know, northeast, western, south, which, you know, I know it's easy enough to do now. I mean, that, that may make the difference. Um, I like to see them do something there. I'm, I'm just, I'm really having a hard time with the size of the new construction above what you have to do for FEMA. Um, so that's what I'm trying to get by.
Mr. Dugan, if I can, uh, jump in, I think that we did submit that, that ridge height comparison, which shows the ridge heights along Seagull Lane, which I actually think is really instructive to your question. Uh, and if I can share my screen. We have maybe the ridge heights along Seagull Lane. So this is starting at Surf Drive and you'll see that the height is, uh, this is, this is a, elevation on natural grade, so thirty-nine, seven, thirty-nine, four, that's in reality thirty-four, six as the ridge height, but you'll see that one eighty-three Surf Drive, which is showing But you'll see that 183 Surf Drive, which is shown here, is slightly smaller than the house in front of it on Surf Drive. It is just slightly larger than the house at 11 Seagull Lane, which is Ms. Arques's property. It is almost exactly the same size as the house at 15 Seagull Lane and is not much larger than the house at 19 Seagull Lane. So, you know, it is not out of line with these houses that are along Seagull Lane, which is the, this is coming in from Mill Road. That is the ridge height comparison for the houses along Mill Road.
I guess what I'm saying, Kevin, is if you're coming in along Mill Road, and I understand those are the ones that are in the water, but there's a lot of properties in front of those. And I'm sure the reason none of them are shown for comparison is because they're all low to the ground like this ranch is and it will it'll look out of character. So, you know, there's been a lot of comments tonight that because they changed the bulk, it does create a really big difference in the massing, the new plan versus the old one. Do you have one that shows the old one with the new one? So, you can see what the difference is?
What I have is the footprint here. We don't have one of the elevations because the building has changed, the layout has changed, the orientation of it has changed. And we certainly don't have one of the existing versus the current because at that point, it's sort of comparing apples to cats because you have a building that's going to be elevated 12 feet.
The case that's been made repeatedly tonight is that this is a huge improvement over the last plan. It may be a huge improvement. I just need to see that.
Sure. So, this overlay does show the dash line is what was previously proposed. The hard line is the currently proposed house. So, that is an overlay of the...
But that's a footprint and I understand. If I looked at any of these houses along this whole area as a footprint, I would not be able to make a comparison on how they would affect the neighborhood. You have to see an elevation.
Sure. So, we did show you the elevation. We have an elevation. So, this is, this elevation here is viewing from the cul-de-sac and you'd see this is 183 Surf Drive. You have, this is the Steppian property, the lower one. Behind it is, I'm not sure if it's 199 or 185 Surf Drive.
I guess the issue I have is that, to be honest, I don't consider the Surf Drive properties in the neighborhood. That's just my opinion. I consider Seagull Lane is only access from Mill Road. It's not access from Surf Drive. Even though this property has a Surf Drive access, I mean, address, it's not access from Surf Drive. I would use the same properties too if I was doing the comparison. I don't think the one in the corner does great benefit because in just my opinion, that's got a little overboard compared to everything else. But I just want to know, is it possible to get one of those images, like he said, a ghost image or comparison that shows? So, when you make a statement that says, "We've changed the bulk 300, 400 square feet, it's made a great difference in the visual character of the property", then show it. Show, you know, pictures are worth a thousand words. If somebody sees the property and it's like, wow, it does make a huge difference, that may be the plus on, you know, an approval. And I'd like to see them do something there myself. I'm having a very hard time at looking at the size of these homes and the argument has always been the same. You know, they have to meet the flood zone requirements because they have to upgrade the inside of the house. There's no way around it. But these properties never go the same size of what's there currently or two stories. They go two and a half or they do expansions. And I don't think that's a requirement. It may be an ease for an applicant, but I don't think that's a requirement that we should be looking at all properties and saying, well, because it's flood zone regulations, they should be always be able to go max height and max size and it works. So, I guess I'm just asking that I would like to see, you know, the information that, at least the idea Mr. Kirk had of a comparison of the current over the last, and if the old plan of elevation was available, a comparison that with the new one, so I can see what the difference is. If it's not, I understand. But I think at the process we were having at the previous hearing, I think we had those elevations. So, it doesn't seem that it would be too much of a trouble to superimpose.
My only concern is that it's not a direct comparison because of changes to layout, changes to orientation, changes to design, changes to decks, changes to ridgelines. That being said, I'll speak with Greg and see what we can do. I didn't mean to cut off your questioning of Mr. Sarunian. So, I don't know if you have any other questions, but then I would like to respond to some of Mr. Kirk's comments.
Yeah, yeah, go right ahead. You can finish with whatever else you need.
Sure. So, I would like just to take an opportunity to address some of Mr. Kirk's comments. He mentioned that Ms. Arques and her late husband had imposed height restrictions on some of the properties. This property in question was not one of the ones that a height restriction was imposed on. And to say that the height restrictions were imposed to help beautify the neighborhood, I think would be a gross mischaracterization because I think it's clear that they were imposed to preserve their own views. However, restriction indeed can only last for 30 years and it affected the four houses at the corner, which does not include this property and are relevant to our question. He mentioned that, you know, the lot is not protected, which is just an inaccurate statement. The law and the house are pre-existing non-conforming. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Chapter 243(c) of the zoning bylaw both state that structures can attain pre-existing non-conforming status if they've been there for at least six years with a building permit and 10 years without. And we certainly have vested that hurdle. Mr. Kirk also said there's no evidence of approval by the planning board, which I think is just inaccurate again because it's signed by the planning board. The subdivision plan is signed by the planning board, saying approved by the planning board. That to me seems like pretty prima facie evidence of approval. And I just, I can't, what I can't wrap my head around is what the end result of the logic is. So, if he's saying we have a non-conforming law, is he saying that this house should be torn down? I don't think anyone's making that argument. It is just throwing stumbling blocks in front of us. It is pounding on the table because neither the facts nor the law are on their side. Those are my only thoughts as to Mr. Kirk's comments. You know, I think that just to address one thing you would say, Mr. Dugan, that Surf Drive is not the neighborhood. I think I have a tough time with that. Those houses are 30 feet away. I don't see how they can't be part of the neighborhood. They are, you know, it is not a bright line test of the neighborhood ends here. It is a totality of the circumstances. You stand at Mr. Noonan's property and you are surrounded by 181 Surf Drive, 185 Surf Drive, 187 Surf Drive, 199 Surf Drive, 11 Seagull Lane, which is Ms. Arques's property, which is also a two, you know, two and a half story structure. The 10 Seagull Lane property is a 35-foot-high structure. This is not out of character at all for the neighborhood. It's very much in line with it. And I just don't think you can separate and say that the Surf Drive properties aren't part of the neighborhood. But beyond that, we have the neighborhood saying that they want this. The neighborhood has said, yes, we think this is appropriate. We think this fits. We think this should be approved. And I just think it's tough for, I can't quite wrap my head around how we can say that it doesn't fit the neighborhood when the neighborhood says it fits the neighborhood.
So, I guess, Mr. Clower, the only issue I have with that, it's not with other letters in general, but when testimony comes from a neighbor that we're in favor and then they mention because we want to do this next, it puts a little bit of a blockade in the endorsement. You know, it's still going to go in as an endorsement, but you know, when the testimony is, yes, we like it and because this is why, you know, that sits in your mind at some point.
Sure. And there was one letter from the Steppians that said that. And, you know, I suppose they could probably do it without the benefit of a special permit because they don't have the setback issues to the river that we do. So, you know, I think that it's some, you know, the house at 181 Surf Drive and the house directly in front of the Noonans were both approved without the benefit of a special permit. They're both on almost exactly 20% lot coverage. 199 Surf Drive at the corner of Mill and Surf Drive did have a special permit that was approved by this board. But the two properties directly in front of Mr. Noonan's property did not need the benefit of a special permit. Those were done slightly under 20% lot coverage. However, Mr. Noonan, even if he was under 20% lot coverage, would still require a special permit due to the setback to the river.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Clower. Scott, were you indicating that you had something or?
Yeah. May I ask a question? This may be for Tim Santos.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, Tim, being that it's going to be on pilasters, right? Those, the pilasters that are above ground, the pylons, right? What are the dimensions of those?
I believe they're 18 by 18, but Greg can answer that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so Greg, so they're 18 by 18 above grade. What is the footprint below grade? Are they...
No, they land on a strip footing that is approximately four feet wide. And they run longitudinal. We did do some breakup of that than we normally do mainly because conservation had a concern of the excavation. So, we designed them so enough that we can put in a box when they're doing the excavation.
Does the box extend past what's represented by, does that encroach more than the 10 feet represented by the closest one to the wall? Under grade?
I don't remember. Hold on a second.
Well, if they're 18 by 18 and the platform that they go on is four by four.
Because those are just picking up decks. They're not picking up the main body of the house.
I'm talking about distance to the toe or underneath the wall itself. Because understandably, they've got to be at least four feet deep, maybe five.
No, they're four. We typically do five, but we went, we're going to go four in this one. We did have soil analysis done. When you're saying the wall, which wall are you referring to?
The riprap wall that holds the water back from the property.
All right, I'm working on myself my plan, so I mean, I don't have...
Mr. Sarunian, every time you turn away from your screen, we cannot hear you at all.
I'm trying.
To my major question, and my major question is, what is the water table at high tide at the four and a half feet at the base of that?
So, again, we went through all this with conservation. I don't have that information with me tonight. We had a geo-technical engineer involved.
So, we can assume that there's going to be a water issue when you have excavation with de-watering? Did you discuss that with them?
We did discuss that with conservation. We do show a de-watering basin. The reason why, one of the first conservation hearings was continued was to address some of the structural concerns that a few of the board members had at that time.
All right. So, when you had that discussion, Tim, did they require you to get rid of the water that was coming in or are you allowed to pump it back into the river there?
No, we have, if you look to on our site plan, if you look to the south of the house, there's a 16 by 16 de-watering basin, which will be...
So, they didn't require a frac tank or anything?
No, no, there's actually a detail on our plan that shows the hay bales and the silk bags.
So, it'll go back down naturally and then out underneath? My other question was, were there any comments or concerns about the depth of the excavation undermining that mortared wall?
And how did you guys? And again, we addressed it by, we're only digging one pad at a time. We're not for that particular area. And again, I apologize. We had all this. I just don't have it with me.
Well, that would have been important.
Yeah, but again, it was all, conservation was very concerned and they were totally satisfied the way it was designed.
No, I understand that.
Yep, the whole excavation process. You know, we described how we're going to do it. They're not going to go in and strip this whole area. That's how we typically do these. You know, you work inside the entire hole and then backfill it. These few piers closest to the riprap are going to be done individually, meaning it's going to actually be excavated. The footing will be placed, the pier will be put in, we'll backfill, then we'll move on to the next one. So, it's a costly, yeah, it's a costly exercise, but you know, it's the safest way to do it.
And sometimes that has to be explained to some of us, just like that. So, it answers questions that sometimes we don't know how to ask, but we're concerned with. So, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Scott, and Mr. Sarunian, thank you for the clarification. Any other questions from the board? All right, seeing none. Oh, I do see Ed Kirk. If we could elevate him, please. Attorney Kirk, we have you elevated again. So, you'll just have to turn on your microphone if you could briefly address whatever item you need to.
Right. Principally, just to clarify, on the request that the applicant submit a ghosting or super imposition, it would be for the existing structure at 183, the Noonan home, in comparison to the most recent iteration of the proposed structure. We don't have to go back. It's just to show the relative size, mass, bulk, whatever, between the existing structure that now is there and the one they are proposing in this particular application. That's what I...
Appreciate the clarification. Thank you, Attorney Kirk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, back to the board. Any questions, any follow-up questions at all? All right, moving forward, do we have everything that we need in order to close and make a decision? Or, no, Attorney Kirk has clarified the position on the ghost image. Bob, does that change your position? Would you need that to come to a decision? Or if anyone else on the board has any other sort of concern about any additional information we need?
I guess I would ask the applicant and Mr. Clower, do you think that would help your case?
I don't know. I don't mean to be flip. I simply don't know the answer to the question. I think that, I think we've given a lot of information that I think lends itself towards the board approving this. I think the applicant has really tried to do everything they can to address the board's concerns. If preparing an image of that nature is the difference between getting it approved and not getting it approved, of course, we'll do so. But I feel as though what happens is we respond to requests and then there's new requests. We respond to requests and there's new requests. And that's not from the board necessarily. That's also from the butter because we provided what was asked for and now we're being tasked with something else by the butter.
Mr. Chairman, could we keep the record open only for the submittal by the applicant of the comparison, which we could review at the next hearing? And then at that point, we have all our information. We won't take anymore. So, there's no more back and forth. And at that point, we can have a discussion to make a decision on the project.
All right. So, you would be looking for that ghost image that was described in order to come to a decision? Okay.
All right. But here's the only problem is that if you close the hearing, you're not going to be able to have any answers from anybody if you have questions. So, in other words, all the board can do is deliberate based on what's submitted. So, I guess I would suggest if you are asking for more material, that you would not close the hearing.
And that was going to be my request as well because I think we'd be able, you know, if we are going to submit more, I want to be able to address it and to address the board's questions. If the board felt as though they could make a decision tonight, I would love to be done with this tonight. But I want it to be the right answer.
Thank you, Attorney Clower. I'll just throw it out there that I don't think the ghost imaging, although I think it's a novel and interesting idea, I don't need that in order to come to a decision.
Chairman, I would agree with that. I had asked for that. However, when I saw the ridgeline height comparison, my concerns were answered and addressed.
Thank you, James. Yeah, I think just everything that we traditionally ask for, the ridge lines, the bulk calculations, everything that the applicant submitted for tonight's hearing, I have enough to make a decision. I know, looking at the time though... it's getting very late. We do have four other hearings ahead of us. Um, so if if the board would be so inclined, I'd be in favor of closing the hearing tonight, and then uh at the next hearing, just having a board discussion and then coming to a a final vote on it. Uh, Mary, how do you feel?
I would agree with you. I don't I don't need the ghosting.
Okay. And Ed, how do you feel?
Yeah, I'm the same. I don't need to ghosting. It'd be all for voting tonight.
All right.
If I if I may, Mr. Chair, um typically, and recognizing the hour, um typically, when when we have a contentious hearing like this, would ask for a discussion prior to closing. Um, because my concern is, right now, I I have a good indication, I think, of how of how four out of the five members would vote. Uh, I'm not clear at all on the fifth, uh to be quite honest. And before closing, I'd I'd like to have an idea of where we are, because if not, I'd like to try to address that.
All right, all all you need is four, right?
But but I I it my my math is not four necessarily in favor right now, so.
All right, um, again, I I am looking at the time. I does the board want to offer any initial opinions about the project? I mean, I I I think we'd.
Yeah, my my opinion on polling, I know we've been doing this a lot in the past, but I I really think polling is a slippery slope. You know, every time we seem to do polling on projects, depending on what the polling is, there seems to be applications for withdrawal or changes or anything else, so you know, I'd rather have the applicant be satisfied with whatever their presentation was, and at that point, close the hearings and then have a deliberation later on in the decision.
All right, thank you, Bob. Anyone else?
I would just say in fairness to an applicant, I think they should have an opportunity with to withdraw because of the two-year time bar. So if there is going to be a negative decision, I think that an applicant having the opportunity to to withdraw is very important.
Right, I mean, if 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 we do close the hearing tonight, and if we do continue, have a discussion, and and then, you know, which way the board's leaning, I you know, i- if the board is going toward denial, I I would certainly allow a vote to reopen for the limited purposes of you either withdrawing or 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 doing wha- whatever you need to do, Attorney Clark. All right, uh, Noreen, I'll defer to you in terms of when the next best date is, which could be live and in person.
Yeah, um, not quite. I guess I'd recommend, given, you know, that this case has been going on for a while, that we put it on for June tenth. Because your meeting on the third is pretty packed.
All right, and it's the tenth that we've been kind of leaving open for?
Well, you do have two forty Bs that night, but
Okay.
it might be that if you're just wrapping this up, uh you'd be able to get that done in hopefully a timely way.
Sounds good. All right, so we won't quite be uh live and in person yet, but it sounds like June tenth is the way to go.
So I just have a question on that on the night of June tenth, so where we do have two forty Bs. Um, I'd want to handle the forty B stuff first. And I know we take stuff out of order, and I know it's kind of a difficult thing for the applicant, but having a forty B, depending on what the discussion goes later in the night, is extremely difficult. So maybe with the app, it's understanding that that night we may take things out of order, and we may do the forty Bs first.
I don't know. I I guess I'm not going to tell you what to do, but I I would think if, you know, this hearing is just essentially for a vote, it seems like that could be a a pretty quick matter at the beginning of the meeting, but it's up to you.
All right, well, the board does reserve the right to take things out of order, so if if we do that, we do. If we don't, we don't, so.
So I'd make a motion to uh so I guess we'll uh leave it leave it open and continue to June tenth.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion was made by Bob to continue to June tenth, seconded by Ed. Roll call vote. Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Thank you, Ed. Mary?
Mary Berry, I.
Thank you, Mary. James?
Hi.
Thank you, James. Thank you, thank you. And T J Hury, I, so it passes unanimously. Attorney Clark, will we see you back here uh virtually June tenth?
I uh I look forward to it. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and it is appreciated.
Thank you.
All right, um, Mr. Chairman, could we um schedule a quick break?
We sure can. We'll take a five-minute break, and we will be back with our new public hearings. See everyone then.
Thank you. With associated parking and parking for a fee on subject property. And as the board knows, this is our annual permitting for the Barnstable County uh fairgrounds. There is only one letter in the file, and and it was forwarded to the applicant. Uh, it did come in today. Uh, it's from a Henry Ricci at two six six Ashumet Road, Henry and Mary Lou Ricci. It does state, we are neighbors of the fairgrounds and have never complained of activities at the Barnstable County Fair. We've always enjoyed the fair and have attended multiple times every year and volunteered. Our issue is with the excessive noise from the Thelma drive-in and concert last summer and fall. The website advertised a fifty thousand watt sound system, which created an excessive noise. We had assumed sound would be transmitted over the car radios. That was not the case. Worse was that it was involved into a concert venue. Uh, this is worse than any of the noise from the fair. The noise started as early as three or four, as the band was practicing, and it continued until approximately ten P M. Um, we didn't initially complain since the pandemic was going on. We would not want to see repeat um this year, and I would just make a note to the board that we are here just to give the permission for them to do this. Um, events like this, like they is mentioned in this letter, the drive-in was something that would be through the select board. Um, and I know that the select board did deal with um issues with the drive-in last year.
All right, thank you for the clarification, Bob. And for the Barnstable County Agricultural Society, we have Miss Wendy Brown. Welcome. Oh, and you are muted. Sorry about that. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, um, thank you for inviting me again. It's been a couple of years, so it's good to be back here. Unfortunately, still on Zoom, but things will change. I do want to preface just saying one thing, that the uh Thelma's drive-in did approach us again to um start up again, and we have said no um in respect to the neighbors and the noise complaints.
All right, thank you for that. Um, and anything else?
Um, basically, the slate you have in front of you is pretty much um the same as it was in two thousand and nine, um, two thousand and twenty. Um, we've pretty much rolled everything over. Obviously, we have gotten, yeah, the good news that all events will um carry on. We've been working hand in hand with Scott McGam um to address any concerns that the health department has, which currently are none. So I guess it's business as usual, and we've got two months to get it together.
Wonderful. There will be a fair in the air again this summer.
Yeah, everybody's looking forward to the song, aren't they?
All right, we will turn it to board questions. Uh, let's see if anyone has any questions. Anyone at all can just shout them out.
I have one for you, Mr. Chairman. Wha- what?
Sure, Scott.
This administratively in the future.
I don't think we're allowed to.
No? All right.
No.
All right.
Yeah, I think under the bylaws, it has to be a public hearing.
Okay.
With the butter's notice and the whole the whole nine yards.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any any other questions? Anyone else? All right.
To close.
Sounds good.
I I do have one one quick.
Go ahead.
For the, I do have one quick note for the board. Um, you do grant these permits on an annual basis. Um, Ms. Brown noted that they do have one request for um someone who's proposing to be at the campground in twenty twenty-two in June. And due to the timing that they typically come in for their annual request, it's not sufficient time for this group to prepare ahead. So they're actually asking for the permission now to attend in twenty twenty-two. So it asks the board to either grant an exception for this one proposal or to uh extend your approval through the end of, let's see, through June thirteen, twenty twenty-two, to allow this um one additional uh cultural festival that they're planning.
I'll make a motion on option two, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good. First, first, we need to close the hearing, right? Before we come to a decision.
I'm excited.
We are. All right.
That's where I was going. Move to close.
Move to close by Ken, seconded by Scott. Roll call vote. Ed?
Ed Van Kuren, I.
Thank you, Ed. Scott? Thank you, Ed. Scott?
Thoughts and sky.
Thank you, Scott. Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Thank you, Bob. Ken?
Ken Formanai.
Thank you, Ken. And TJ Hurry I passes unanimously. The hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. And where were we going with this? Scott?
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve on option two as described by the administrator.
Wonderful.
So we'd approve through June thirteenth of twenty twenty two?
Right. I guess I would give them to June fourteenth, so that will allow the move out day on the thirteenth, just so that there's no confusion.
That's fine.
All right. And all right, before we carry through with the motion, did, did you want findings and conditions? Or can you, can you just use the usual?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good.
All right. Just checking, just checking. All right. So that was Scott's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Bob. Roll call vote once again. Ed?
Thank you, Karen and I.
Thank you, Ed. Scott?
Thoughts and sky.
Thank you, Scott. Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Thank you, Bob. Ken?
And Formanai.
Thank you, Ken. And TJ Hurry I. So that motion to approve passes unanimously. Ms. Brown, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. I hope they see you at the fair.
Hope to see you. All right. Up next, we have application twenty four dash twenty one Kramer, eight Hawthorne Court in Falmouth. I believe for the applicant, we have Michael Whalen. If Michael, if you're out there, if you could click the raised hand icon, that way we can get you elevated and underway. Eight Hawthorne Court in Falmouth is requesting a special permit to remove existing deck and construct an addition at the rear of the dwelling. Bob?
Yeah, so application twenty four dash twenty one Stephen D. and Elizabeth S. Kramer, one sixty Jamie Lane, Stone, Mass. Have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C of the code of Falmouth to remove the existing deck and construct an addition at the rear of the dwelling on subject property known as eight Hawthorne Court, Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. From engineering. The application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Hawthorne Court is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property of butters or public right of way. Four, dry wells are proposed for the roof. The supplied calculations do not match the town's design storm. However, the storage provided by the proposed dry wells appears to be adequate. We defer to the zoning board if revised calculations should be submitted. And five, we requested the board include a condition requiring a waddle line across the front of the property to protect the town right of way. From conservation, applicant should file a request for determination of applicability in order to seek approval from CONCOM for the proposed construction of the addition within the zone A E thirteen. Fire department has no issues with the project is drawn. Planning has no comments. Water has no comments. From health, property on town sewer, so no issues with health suggest reaching out to the wastewater division for comments. I would make a note that we don't have any referral from wastewater division. And from the assessors, this includes lot eight in half of lot ten. They have submitted everything regarding the flood zone. They've submitted the FEMA breakdown worksheet for substantial improvement. They submitted a certified appraisal that shows that they're well below the fifty percent, so that the project would be allowed. And they also submitted neighborhood calculations for lot coverage. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And Mr. Whalen, you've been elevated. We can see you. You just need to unmute yourself.
Hello. Hello. Good evening.
Doing well yourself?
Good, thank you. Basically, to go through, we just discussed the dry well calculations. The revisions have been submitted. Not sure where they actually, Ashley DeMello received them. And then CONCOM, I did go through a public hearing with them, and we have passed their conditions. What we're looking to do here on this house, I'm not sure if I should try to show you the, the small addition on the back or just basically tell you what our plan is.
Sure, you, you can tell us.
All right. Well, basically, on the back of this house is a small four foot by twelve foot addition. Single story. We want to take that down and basically make it into a ten foot by fourteen foot two-story addition. And there's a rear deck that's there. It removed that deck. By doing that, we're actually making the more less non-conforming. Is that how you say it?
That's it.
Okay. So currently, I think we're at twenty eight and a half percent lot coverage. And by taking down the deck and adding the addition will be at twenty seven percent lot coverage. And we still are within the rear inside setback requirements. So I think the biggest thing is the percentage of lot coverage.
All right. Anything else about the project?
It's pretty simple. A lot easier than the last two we sat through.
All right. How about we turn it to board questions and see if we have anything? Okay. All right. The voting numbers on this project are the regular voting numbers. So Ed, anything?
I don't have any questions.
Very good. Scott?
We thank you, sir.
Very good. James? All right. Thanks, James. Mary?
No questions.
Thank you, Mary. Bob?
No questions. Brandon some.
All right. Ken?
Why should I go against the grain? No questions.
I always try to find something, but I don't have any questions myself. It's just one of those projects. What can I say? All right. So we will turn it to public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern regarding this project, go ahead and click the raised hand icon in the Zoom app, and we will elevate you in a moment. All right. Not seeing anyone for public comment. Back to the board.
Motion to close.
Second.
Motion to close made by Scott and seconded by Bob. Roll call vote. Ed?
Thank you, Karen and I.
Thank you, Ed. Scott?
Thoughts and sky.
Thank you, Scott. Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Thank you, Bob. Ken?
Ken Formanai.
Thank you, Ken. And TJ Hurry I passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken, however brief it may have been.
So motion to approve with conditions?
Second.
All right. Proof with conditions made by Bob, and I'll give the second to Scott. Go ahead, Bob.
So two forty, two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. It enhances utilization. They're going to be removing an existing rear deck and rear addition and replacing it with this two-story addition. The removal of the existing deck is a four by twelve. The new addition will be a ten by fourteen six two-story addition, which consists of a powder room, laundry room on the first floor, master bedroom on the second. They submitted a FEMA cost work down break sheet, submitted an appraisal. Submitted lot coverage comparison calculations, which show they are in the mid-range. They did submit updated information regarding the dry wells, which seem to be adequate for the property. Ridge height of the main structure is twenty six point five. The addition is twenty four. Property is on town sewer. It's on the LP SSA sewer system. It does have an injection pump. They're doing no increase on bedrooms. There was no referral from wastewater department. I would just note that it is on the injection pump and if, if there's any need to relocate anything regarding that wastewater system, they would have to talk to the wastewater department. The file stated that we did not have a determination of applicability from CONCOM. Applicant states that they have gone through the process. We will just want a copy of the determination for the file. And the property does, is located in the A E thirteen floodplain.
Slight reduction in lot coverage, Robert.
Yeah, so they, so in lot coverage, current is twenty eight point six, going down to twenty seven, where twenty is allowed. And the structure parking paving is forty four point nine, going down to forty three point three, where forty percent is allowed.
Very good. All right. Conditions?
I would just do per plans. I don't think we have to condition anything with the dry wells. I think the calculations they submitted are fine. We will want to condition, engineering did ask for a waddle line. W A T T L E. And I guess condition no change in bedrooms.
All right.
All construction equipment and materials to be onsite during the construction in our regular hours, right?
Yeah, correct. And there's also no change in grading or roof design that's shown. They will be putting a patio in place of the deck, I think.
All right. Anything else?
No, but cross out the grading and roof design. That's on my notes on something else.
Sure. All right.
Thought it sounded a little odd.
All right. If that does it for findings and conditions, that was a motion to approve the project with conditions made by Bob and seconded by Scott. We'll do a roll call vote. Ed? It looks a little frozen. How about we start with, oh, Ed, we got you.
Thank you, Karen and I.
Thank you, Ed. Scott?
Thoughts and sky.
Thank you, Scott. Bob?
Robert Duganai.
Thank you, Bob. Ken?
Ken Formanai.
Thank you, Ken. And TJ Hurry I. So the motion passes unanimously. Mr. Whalen, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you much. You have a good night.
You too. All right. Up next, we have application twenty five dash twenty one Heald Trustees, nineteen Chapquid Bars Road in West Falmouth, requesting a special permit to allow a third garage bay. And for the applicant, I believe there is attorney Clower. If you could be elevated, please.
So application twenty eight dash twenty, oops. So application twenty five dash twenty one Philip B. Heald Junior and Jennifer J. Heald Trustees applied to the Falmouth zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash twenty three G of the code of Falmouth to allow a third garage bay on subject property known as nineteen Chapquid Bars Road, West Falmouth, Mass. For referrals. From Health Department, septic was installed January of twenty twenty one and is pending a certificate of compliance. The third bay does not appear to have any bearing on that septic system in terms of capacity and setbacks from engineering. Application was reviewed for impacts to public rights of way and public utilities. Chapquid Bar Road and Kelvin Grove are public rights of way in this area. A new driveway is proposed. The applicant was issued a driveway permit twenty, April fourteenth of twenty twenty. And a bond is on file for the work. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project was not directing any stormwater runoff to public property butters or public rights of way. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of dry wells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the roof. There is a proposed foundation drain, but it isn't clear if the intent is to divert roof runoff at this as well. Five, we recommend the following condition be included. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per ninety, section ninety nine one. A fixing of legible numbers required and title for compliance. The approved driveway permit includes erosion and sediment controls to protect the town rights of way. However, there are no erosion sediment controls to protect the abutting properties. And there is proposed work closely abutting properties. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of work and include proposed erosion and sediment controls. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions document, which can be found in the engineering's division page of the town's website. References to the Department of Public Works Engineering Division shall be replaced with the zoning board of appeals would be the permitting authority for the project. From CONCOM, conservation staff have no comment on the above reference, it appears to fall outside the jurisdiction. From assessors, this includes lots twenty six A and twenty seven. From Water Department, no comment. Planning Board, no comment. Fire Department has no issues with the project as drawn. There are two letters of support in the file. First one is from Teresa and Robert Owens, dated May nineteenth, twenty twenty one. Members of the zoning board, my name is Teresa Owens. My husband Rob and I live at five Kelvin Grove. We are next door neighbors of Phil and Jen Heald. We are in full support of their request for a special permit for the third bay door. Phil and Jen's home is beautiful and great addition to the neighborhood. And then they left their contact information if there was questions. And then a letter dated May tenth, twenty twenty one from a Michael L. Katzf. It says, dear board members, I write you today regarding the above noted matter. In my opinion, the addition garage bay sought by the applicants will in no way detract from the character of the neighborhood. Diminish the values of the surrounding properties would be disruptive in any ways whatsoever. For these reasons, I am in favor of the Heald's application for a special permit to add a third garage bay on the subject property known as nineteen Chapquid Bars Road. And that's, that's everything you need.
Sounds good. Thank you, Bob. And for the applicant, we have attorney Clower.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I am an attorney here in Falmouth. And I represent the applicants, Phil and Jennifer Heald. Mr. and Mrs. Heald are actually in the attendee list tonight and have asked if we could elevate them in case there's any questions for them to address. The attendee list is much smaller now than it was just a short while ago. So I don't think there should be any issue finding them. We are, the applicants are looking to create a third garage bay at nineteen Chapquid Bars Road, which is located in West Falmouth. The lot is just shy of twenty four thousand square feet and is in the residential B zoning district. As the board will, of course, recall, we were previously for you with the same application. However, there were some issues with the process and the board was upset when we threw. We closed off the intended third garage bay and was true without prejudice. They, they sealed that off, but the applicants do still, would still light the bay and are here tonight to try to observe the correct process. The applicants have obtained permits to raise or rebuild the house at the property. It's a one and a half story four bedroom house. The house conforms to all lot covered in setback requirements. And the addition of a third garage bay provides additional garage space, minimizes clutter in the lot, and provides additional parking and storage for the applicants. The garage itself is eight hundred and sixteen square feet, but whereas the lot is under thirty thousand square feet, it requires a special permit. The addition of the bay does not change the footprint of the existing garage. It does not add any roof space. It's not creating any additional runoff. Does not create any additional rooms or bedrooms or change the structure in any way, shape, or form. In hopes of anticipating the board's questions, there is a second floor space above the garage, which is unfinished for storage only. And it's accessed only through a five foot high crawl space through a bedroom on the second floor. In terms of, in terms of the special permit for the garage, there's no standard set forth in the language of the bylaw. So we have to look to the standards of two forty, two sixteen. And the threshold question of that is, does the proposed use have adverse effects which overbalance the beneficial effects to the neighborhood and to the town? In this case, the site is more than adequate in size. Allowing the garage does not change the nature of the use in any way. It only increases the owner's utilization of the existing space. There's no impact on traffic flow or safety. Uh, I believe that the board can, uh, issue a special permit and I'm happy to address any questions that you may have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Attorney Clower. And the voting members on this project are the regular voting members.
Just before, before we go, I, I did, uh, I think the heels did want to be elevated just in case any questions came up.
Oh, sure. Okay. Uh, if we could get them elevated, please, Justin. Just in case we need them. No, sometimes it takes a second. Uh, Justin, if you could elevate Jennifer and Phil Heald, please.
Perhaps we can.
Yeah.
Questions while they be, while they, uh, are elevated.
Sounds good. All right.
Asked before and I don't want to help, I don't want to put the brakes on this.
No question, no question. No worries. No questions from Ed. All right, Scott?
Yeah, I guess, uh, I would ask Attorney Clower, uh, you fully understand what our heartache was with the last part and, and you, and you referenced procedure. Um, it was the assumption that it was just to give me, uh, uh, give me. And, uh, and that's what I detested about the way it goes. Um. Our present, uh, um, building commissioner has a system with which he goes by and. Um, fortunately for you, it fits the criteria. Um, as it's presented today. And that's why you'll get my approval. Um, but that's only why.
Thank you, sir. We, we don't, certainly don't want to relitigate, um, what happened at the last hearing, but we, we recognize it and we've taken steps to correct it. So thank you.
I appreciate that. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. James. All right. Thank you, James. Mary.
No questions.
Thank you, Mary. Bob?
No questions.
All right, and Ken?
I'm just struggling to visualize what this is gonna, it's gonna look like.
I'd be happy to share the, uh, the plan with you, uh, sir. So if I, I almost hit leave and I don't want to hit the leave button. Uh, but I do want to hit the share screen button. So, uh, where my mouse is right now, this third garage bay is not presently there. This is, this is walled off. They would like to add that as a third garage bay. And, and that, that building, that garage exists in that shape, but for that garage bay.
So it's gonna look just like it looked before when we went out there.
Except appropriately permitted this time.
Very good.
All right. And nothing from me. Bob, did you have anything?
No, I just don't know if the administrator wants to just mention, I, and just not mention what the current building, like commissioner considers for this type of space that. Uh, may not happen with other. Commissioners, I guess.
Going forward.
Right. So, so I think there was some misunderstanding in. How different people evaluate space. And I think what happened with the building commissioner. Was that? He was not. Identifying. Necessarily the total amount of space and the total amount of doors. I think what he was suggesting is that while somebody could pour a foundation. They may designate their space for different purposes as opposed to looking at it all as garage space and that. The board really needed to. Uh, prove it. For its purpose and in total prior to the foundation permit being issued to create the space.
Right. We'll turn into public comment. If anyone out there has a question, comment, or concern, go ahead and click the raised hand icon. Using the Zoom app and we will elevate you in a moment. Okay, not seeing anyone. So back to the board. Any follow up questions? None? All right. The board has everything we need. Thank you, Ken. Motion to close my, made by Ken. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bob. Roll call vote, Ed?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Scott? Thank you, Scott. Bob?
Uh, Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob. Ken?
And Forman, I.
Thank you, Ken. And TJ Hurry, I. So the hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. How would the board like to proceed?
I guess to approve with conditions.
All right, motion approved with conditions made by Bob. Second by Ken. On the findings.
Uh, so two forty dash twenty three G, two forty dash two sixteen, not substantially more detrimental. This is allowing a third garage bay door to a, uh, space that already exists. Uh, they're not adding square footage. There's no change in the bedroom count and there's no change in grading or the roof design.
That was a motion to close.
Oh. So yes, on motion to close.
I'm all thrown off. I thought we already had the motion to close. Sorry. It is getting late.
Yeah, I think I already did.
We, we already did motion to close. This was.
Yeah, we did. We did. That's, that's was.
I'm showing, I'm showing unanimous to close and.
We had motion to close. Bob made, Bob made the motion to pass.
Right.
Right.
I seconded.
Yeah.
So he's, he's correct. He's doing a good job of coming up with the findings.
Fantastic. So, so, so although so far, um, I, I think there needs to be some kind of notation, um. Just of, there, there was an issue before, however, the administrator wants the word, just so there's a notation in there. It was before us previously. Uh, and should notate the comments in engineering. Uh, take a notation that there were two letters of support. For the current project.
All right, anything?
In all other ways, this house conforms, correct?
Right.
Yeah, correct.
Certainly does.
Well, I think that's a worthwhile finding.
Absolutely. All right. Anything else for findings? Conditions?
Uh, so, uh, per the plans, um, you need to put the condition, the, um, referrals from engineering, uh, regarding, uh, the section ninety nine one on fixing of numbers. You want to put in about they'd mentioned, I mean, they mentioned about protection. So. Noreen, was that off of the original plan or? I mean, that is their current referral, right? The. They wanted the sediment controls for the neighbors?
Yes. So I think, um. I'll need to double check. There may have been some.
Well, I know they're just basically putting the door in, so maybe the driveway isn't complete yet.
Right. So I think he's looking to have the neighbor's property protected if there's a change to the driveway.
So that we need the sediment control standards put in for, uh, just what they said in the referral. And then on those, they list the zoning board in place of the engineering division.
All right. Anything else for conditions?
Uh, look really quick, uh. No, we should list in the finding too, that they already did get the issue of the driveway permit in April twenty twenty.
I apologize. Was there finding about testimony stating that it was only storage in the overhead?
There was.
Yeah, we should make that finding.
Good finding.
Yeah, garage not to be, um, converted to habitable. We usually put no conversion to habitable space, no increase in bedrooms.
Very good. Anything else for conditions?
Uh, well, they added the, um, the engineer condition, talked about dry wells, but. It just, it's, it just seems odd because it's a driveway now and just a. Door. Uh, please put in the finding that it includes lots twenty six A. Um, and twenty seven.
So I, I think the dry well request is based on roof runoff. And I think that typically that's focused on, uh, new roof area. Um, you know, I realize where the entire house is new. I'm not sure if there's any dry wells in place or not. So I think their request may have been to minimally see to the roof runoff related to the garage.
All right. So they just said, they just said roof in general. So this is a complete reconstruction. Maybe we should just put just what they put in that there'd be addition of, um, of dry wells for. Stormwater infiltration measures for the roof in general.
Because runoff doesn't change whether they're not right now. So that shouldn't. Same roof area and the same pitch and everything else.
Okay. Anything else for conditions? Nothing?
I got nothing.
All right. So that, if, if we're good to go, yeah. All right. So that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Bob, seconded by Ken. Roll call vote, Ed?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Scott?
Lots of skin, I.
Thank you, Scott. Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob. Ken?
And Forman, I.
Thank you, Ken. And TJ Hurry, I. So it passes unanimously. Attorney Clower and the heels. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Efforts appreciated. I want to note that I've been coming to ZBA hearings very consistently for the last, I don't know, nine years. I've never seen this board get through three hearings in about twenty five minutes. I'm wildly impressed. Good job today, guys.
Don't get used to it.
I wasn't expecting it myself, so.
Have a great night, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So it actually is past nine thirty. According to our rules, the board's business actually concludes at nine thirty. It's nine thirty five. We have one more application. We have a couple of items on our open meeting agenda. Would there be a motion?
So. Ten?
Ten o'clock sounds good.
Second.
I think it's doable. All right. So motion to continue the board's business until ten o'clock tonight. Made by Scott, seconded by Bob, roll call vote, Ed?
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you, Ed. Scott?
Lots of skin.
Thank you, Scott. James?
James Morse.
Thank you, James. Mary?
Mary Berry.
Thank you, Mary. Bob?
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob. Ken?
And Forman, I.
Thank you, Ken. And TJ Hurry, I passes unanimously. Board's business is continued to ten o'clock tonight. So up next, we do have application twenty six dash twenty one, McKim trustees, three oh six Scranton Ave in Falmouth. For this application, if we could please elevate Mr. Peter Billado. And it is requesting a special permit to construct a cupola, extend existing storage bit space and modify the front and rear facades. Of the existing boat shed.
The application number twenty six dash twenty one, Melissa McKim and William A. McKim trustees, forty turn his way, Norwell, Mass. Applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to sections two forty dash three C of the code of Falmouth. To construct a cupola, extend existing storage space and modify the front and year for, and rear facades of the existing boat shed. On subject property known as three oh six Scranton Ave. Referrals. Conservation staff administratively approved the above referenced project. No excavation was approved for the above referenced. If excavation is proposed, the applicant must file with the conservation commission. And they, and they included the application for administrative review. Um, had two cable. Uh, we can ask this question later, but in the administrative review for. Concom, it says that the work described is to add two gable bump outs. Um, twelve inches by twelve feet. So we just have to see how that compares to what they put in our application. Uh, from engineering, application was reviewed to impact the public rights of way and public utilities. Scranton Avenue is a public right of way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right of way. Any changes within the right of way would require filing a permit with the engineering division. Any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. The project was not directing a stormwater runoff to public property butters of public rights of way. From assessors, this includes lot three, uh, lot B and one A. Uh, from water department, no comment. No comment from planning. Fire department has no issues with the project as drawn. And no issues from the health department. Uh, no letters in the file. Um, I just have one quick question to the administrator. So Noreen, does that? Does the administrative review that they sent in here to Concom, does any of that have to be changed for description compared to ours?
I wouldn't necessarily think so. I mean, certainly we can check back with them and. Conservation sign off is required for a building permit. So if there is any change to what conservation saw or approved. Uh, there will be a delay for the applicant if it doesn't match.
All right. So you might just, just so the applicant knows, because we're, we're listing that it's four bump outs. One by fourteen feet and they're listing that it's two gable. Changes, um, around twelve feet. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And for the applicant, I believe we have Mr. Peter Billado. We've been elevated. All you need to do is turn on your microphone and your video.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I can introduce myself, I don't know why Peter's not responding to you, but my name is Paul Feldman. I'm an attorney and I represent the applicant. Oh, there's Peter. Uh, so.
Nope, he's trying.
I, I can.
Okay, I'm on.
All right, Peter, I, I could either give a quick introduction or Peter, you can. What's ever gonna move it along?
Okay, no, go ahead, Paul.
Say that again?
Uh, go ahead and, uh, start off.
So, um, the, the, this is a property in the Marine District. Uh, it's an existing, uh, boat building. Um, what is being proposed. To the exterior of the building is purely aesthetic. It is to break up the building mass and make it, the building look more attractive. I, I can't speak to the variance between the way the conservation commission described it as Mr. Dugan was just referring to versus the way. It's been presented on the plans and we filed in the application. But we're basically making a box windows, uh, twelve inches. Uh, and as you can see on the drawings, they were going to be in four places on both sides of the building so that it, um, is symmetrical. Um, and, um, it's gonna extend out twelve inches. It's not gonna create a set yard, uh, set. It's, it's conforms to the setback requirements. It's not gonna require any excavation. It's gonna sit on the existing foundation. It's basically box, box windows. And it's purely for aesthetics and there's a little cupola that's proposed in the center. As, as you can see on the elevation drawings and nothing else is changing about the building. Uh, that's the exterior. Um, it's a non-conforming, uh, structure. So we're here with a special permit under the substantially more detrimental standard. It's a non-conforming structure. So we're here with a special permit under the substantially more detrimental standard. You guys are quite familiar with it. I've been listening for the last three hours, so I, I know the board is low versed in, in how this works. The only other thing that we wanted to point out to the board, I, I don't. Know if it needed a special permit or not, but we figured we're going to be here and we will, will, will cover the issue is that on the interior of the boathouse. There is a, a storage loft that in its existing condition is about half of a third of the building. You could see it on the existing floor plan. And we just are requesting to extend that loft area up to the other end of the building. The purpose for that is additional storage only. When there's a boat in the boathouse, it's difficult to navigate with all the other materials that are, that are stored in the boathouse. And it's trying to get some of that material off the floor and up into the loft so that it, you can navigate around the boat easier. I, I just heard the board make reference to conditions about you can't convert to habitable space if. I, we would completely agree to a condition like that. We don't want the board to be concerned. This is a, a boat shed. It is a. It's used for, for that purpose and no other purpose. Not, it's not designed to be habitable and. We're, we're happy to agree or maybe the board would do it anyway. Impose such a condition. And, and that's basically it. We could, Peter is our contractor and our builder. He can answer specific questions or I can answer questions and I appreciate the board's attention.
Thank you, Attorney Feldman. So we will turn it to board questions. Ed, anything?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Ed. Scott.
Attorney Feldman, the two percent increase in lot coverage is encompassed by the, the box window build out. Is that where the two percent comes from? Ten point seven to ten point nine?
Yes.
That's it, right? There's nothing.
That's it. It's all, it's just the twelve inch. It's like a boxed out window that's, that this is going to come out twelve inch to break down.
Just getting it on the record. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, thank you, Scott.
Yep.
Also, Scott.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Scott. James, anything?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Mary?
Mary, no questions.
Thank you, Mary. Bob?
No, no questions, but just for clarification, just because I don't want to get held up later on. The information that conservation is getting is actually from the application that you submitted. So it's probably just an error. But the application submitted said they were twelve inch by twelve. It should be very easy to fix. You just want to fix it so you don't get tied up in a. Problem with the application.
Thank, thank you for pointing it out. We'll, we'll, we'll make sure it's consistent throughout.
I think this was the location of the electric power plant that used to be years ago on the harbor.
That predates me, but.
I think it predates all of us, Attorney Feldman. It's a bit of Falmouth history there. Anything else, Bob?
No, I, I think it's a fine project. It's just for aesthetics, so.
Very good. Ken?
So this is a pre-existing accessory structure on the, on private residence.
No, it's, it's actually the primary structure and it's in the Marine District. It's the boatyard and there's a marina and the residence is, is, is allowed as an accessory use. So this is. There's a little bit of a mind twist.
Yeah, I got it.
I went, I went through this in detail at two thousand and eight when we, when we went through this, but. It's, we, we made sure to dot our i's and cross our t's back then.
So you couldn't have the house if you didn't have the boat shed.
Well, you can't have the house unless, right, you can't, the house is accessory to the marina use and it's, and it's for the owner. And.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
That's exactly how it's used.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that, Attorney Feldman and Ken for bringing that up. You brought a. That was one of my questions. All right. Turning to public comment then, it's going to be quick because I only see FCTV out there. Any question, comment or concern regarding this project? Go ahead and click the raised hand icon. I don't think FCTV has any questions. All right. So back to the board.
Motion to close.
Motion to close made by Scott and seconded. I'll give that one to Ed. Roll call vote. Ed.
Good day, Karen, I.
Thank you, Ed. Scott.
That's a Linsky, I.
Thank you, Scott. James, I'm sorry, Bob.
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob. Ken.
And Forman, I.
Thank you, Ken and TJ Hurry. I passes unanimously. Hearing is closed. No more testimony may be taken. All right. And what would be the board's pleasure with this project?
Motion to approve.
Conditions, please.
Second.
All right. Give that motion approved to Scott and I'm going to give the second to Bob. All right. Findings?
Did it, Bob?
Okay, so two forty dash three C, two forty dash two sixteen, not more substantially detrimental. Lot coverage is going from a ten point seven to a ten point nine. It's a thirty-six by fifty boat shed, which is actually the primary use in the Marine District. The accessory is the residence. The application calls for. A four, one foot by fourteen foot bump outs and then a five by five foot cupola at the top of the building. They're also asking to extend the storage space on the second floor loft. Testimony has been that no habitable space is being applied for in the use of the boat storages. It's mainly storage area and boat space.
Testimony that it was purely aesthetics.
Yeah, purely aesthetics. And also there's no, no excavation in the plan.
All right. Anything?
Make a finding that the Concom did administrative approval. There appears to be a clerical error on the size of the bump outs. But Concom's main concern was that there wouldn't be any excavation. An applicant will touch base with Concom to make sure that the measurements in both applications match.
Very good. All right. Conditions?
Per plans, no habitable space. We don't really need a height sort or anything. It's. They can send us a pretty picture after.
Equipment have to be on, on site anyway, by the way it's laid out, so.
It's a beautiful place to do work. There's plenty of room to get in and off the main road.
Sure is. All right. Anything else for conditions?
No, we don't even need anything with dry wells or anything. There's no real. Concern.
All right. Very good. So that was a motion to approve with conditions made by Scott and seconded by Bob. Roll call vote. Ed.
Good day, Karen, I.
Thank you, Ed. Scott.
That's a Linsky, I.
Thank you, Scott. Bob.
Robert Dugan, I.
Thank you, Bob. Ken.
And Forman, I.
Thank you, Ken and TJ Hurry.
We've already voted, which is fine. This is just for the administrator. Because this is a trust, does the, does the decision have to go in the name of the trust? With the trustees as the applicant, since it's the trust that actually owns the property?
Yes, and you know, we'll certainly reflect that.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So thank you for that clarification, Noreen. The motion passes unanimously. Project is approved with conditions. Attorney Feldman, thank you for your time. Nope, we lost him.
See you later.
He, he looked appreciative.
There you go.
I, I think I saw him lip sync thing.
I think, I think I did too. All right. So that wraps it for public hearings. Onto our open meeting items. We have voting the minutes for May sixth, twenty.
And we're tabling those.
Tabling, officially tabling that. Board discussion. We're back June seventeenth. Like I'll keep on saying it, there's no one even watching anymore on Zoom, but maybe there's a few people at home and on FCTV. We're, we're back live on the seventeenth. Fantastic. Speaking of FCTV.
Actually relevant to that. I did mention to Noreen and she confirmed that they'll continue to do this. One of the things about being live is that, you know. Robert has the file. And unless you have a photographic memory and can retain all the information in the file for all the cases.
That's a tough.
You know, there's some things about this zooming that have been pretty good. We've been able to go to the website, pull up documents and, and information during the hearings to refresh our memories or in some cases to create memories. And so I'm hoping we can continue to do that, continue to have that information available electronically. So, and then I can just bring a laptop to the hearings and everything will be right there.
We, we will continue that service. I think it's helpful, especially where more and more people are beginning to go back to their real jobs in real business locations. And that way the public will also be able to access the files, even if they can't get into the town hall during business hours.
Sounds good. All right. I was going to mention that speaking of FCTV, Deb Rogers, who is their executive director or holds a similar title, she did reach out. And she asked me to provide some comment regarding FCTV at the cable committee's hearing last night regarding the Comcast, the upcoming Comcast contract with the town. So I happily obliged. I logged on last night and spoke very highly of FCTV, their volunteers, employees and all the hard work they've done, especially in the past year. Comments were made in my own personal capacity. I told them that it was short notice, so if we did meet as a board, I'm sure we would have come together and voted to speak wonders as a board. But just wanted to let everyone know I did that last night as part of the Comcast contract. I guess FCTV is looking for one HD capabilities on all three of their channels and two to actually. I call it the TV guide channel, but it's really run by Comcast. Just to have everything updated. So everything, every show is actually shown in the appropriate time slot, just like everything else on TV. If you, if you look at FCTV, it just has as the whole thing that comes across. It just tells you it's the FCTV government channel or the educational channel. Or the general channel, channel they have. So those are the two things that they're really asking for. That I think would be entirely appropriate during this next round of negotiations with Comcast. So. There's my big update. Absolutely. Any other update from anyone else?
Just to remind you guys that on June thirtieth, my term is up. And hopefully someone, James or Mary, will step in, become a full-time member.
And we'll be taking applications to replace whoever becomes the full-time member. So we will need a new application from somebody for the vacant associate position.
Very true. So if anyone, anyone knows anyone out there, let's, let's start recruiting. Let's start thinking.
And also, of course, there's, I just have a feeling there might be a few of these cases I've been sitting on that aren't quite resolved. So I'm sure some of you will be voting on those.
Yeah.
Pay attention.
You can still attend the meetings.
I, I know, but I'm not voting. No, I.
That's okay.
I am, I may attend a few because I want to see how these are going to come out.
Yeah, Ken, what else are you going to do on Thursday night?
Exactly.
Yeah.
And, and certainly I can attend the post meeting, as you can see.
Absolutely.
If everything's open now, we can have a farewell party.
Sure.
We certainly can.
Did I hear that you were running for the next selectman's post? It's filled. The next time. No, you didn't hear that. Oh, I didn't. You want to be my campaign manager? Oh, you're your bodyguard, one or the other. You could, you know, I double pay.
All right. Anything else for, anything at all, future agenda items, any other updates?
Just impressed. We're out of here before ten.
Yep, three minutes.
It's not a bad thing.
Barely.
Three minutes on my computer.
All right. Those last hearings did some quick work on those. I wasn't expecting it to go that quickly. So. Nice to be out of here before ten, even though it's two minutes to go.
All right. And I'm glad the heels got the garage door.
Absolutely. So the, the next hearing we have is June third. That is still virtual. See everyone then.
You take care.
Good night.
Night, all.
Bye.
Night.
Good night.